Well, that's too bad, do we? They don't even have the contact.
Well.
I got the inside scoop. Bring it up.
Yeah, I was still getting more information on that. I reached out to the county.
Okay. All right, is everybody here? No, sorry.
Their lawyer?
No, I haven't seen it. It just popped up. I don't know where. All right, good afternoon. And let me get my stuff. So, welcome to the afternoon session of the August 19th Board Meeting. And we will begin with our public hearings, starting with P 53.
Yes, ma'am. We have proof of publication of this matter previously in the February 5th edition of the Tampa Bay Times for the March 25th, 2025 Board Meeting, where it was continued to April 22nd, where it was continued to May 20th, where it was continued to June 17th, where it was continued to today.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Amy Toll with Planning Development and Economic Growth. Item P 58 is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan.
P 58?
Or P 53, excuse me, sorry, P 53. An ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, map 2-15 and sheet 10, from rez 1, residential 1 dwelling unit per gross acre, to PDE plan development on approximately 7.83 acres of real property located north of the intersection of Little Road and Jasmine Boulevard. And a text amendment creating subarea policy flew 7.1.82 Little Road PD and a map amendment to the future land use map, 2-9 amending subarea map 2-982, or adding, I'm sorry, adding subarea map 2-982 Little Road PD. This is a continuance request to the September 16th Public Hearing in Newport Ritchie.
I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
A little discussion. And I appreciate getting the continuance because when this was looked at, it's again, it's closed basis of special concern. I asked them to do the engineering. The first thing they do in 30 days, then 60 days. We're on a third continuance from that point from back in May. I would like to see this continued time uncertain. And once they come back with the stormwater plan, how it's going to be handled, then let them have a town hall meeting, figure out what they can do on the property, and then have it before the residents, and then go to the planning commission, then bring it back to us. These continuances is just not fair to the people to be continued over and over and over again. Some of them don't even know that this would be continued, and some couldn't even make it today. So I think it's time to start this thing over again because clearly, when I told them the concern of the flooding that was in the area, they just didn't get it done. And I don't see where another 30 days is going to get it done either.
Well.
Chair, if we do that, then there's several others. I mean, that's kind of set in precedent for other projects.
Well, I want to hear that with, from staff who's been working with applicant. Where are, where is the applicant?
Sure. So stormwater was submitted, the engineering was submitted, and our stormwater team did take a look at it, and they confirmed that it's sufficient.
Okay.
Then I'd like a meeting with staff. Move to continue, September 16th.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay.
P 54 was published in the April 30th, 2025 edition of the Tampa Bay Times and was supplemented by an affidavit of certified mailings and site postings for the June 17th, 2025 Board of County Commissioners Meeting, where it was continued to today.
Okay.
So item P 54 and P 56 do have residents signed up to speak. Item P 54 is the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, and item P 56, or item P 61 is the companion MPUD rezoning. It's up to the board's discretion, but I would recommend hearing them together.
I don't mind hearing them together. Ford?
I'm fine with it.
We do this for?
Do you have to swear people in, though?
Yes.
Why don't we go ahead and swear everyone in now?
So any?
Procedures now as well?
Yes, yes.
Go ahead, sir.
There are two rezoning agendas, regular and consent. Staff will present each application to the Board of County Commissioners. If staff or planning commission has recommended approval, and there is no opposition, the applicant will be given, will be, and there's no opposition, the application will be considered by the board without further presentation. If staff or planning commission has recommended denial, or if there is opposition to the application, the applicant will be given five minutes for presentation. The opposition will be given three minutes for each individual, five minutes for a group representative, and the applicant will be given three minutes for rebuttal. Any individual disagreeing with staff or planning commission recommendation, or anyone wishing to object to any condition of the rezoning, may at this time request the petition to be pulled from the consent agenda, in which case that application will be heard under the regular agenda later on during the meeting. Otherwise, all rezoning applications on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion and vote. You wish to speak to any petition, please give your name and address, and whether or not you've been sworn for the record. These are quasi judicial public hearings. The law in Florida is that mere public support or opposition of an application is insufficient for this board to take action. Please limit your comments to those criteria found within the Board's Land Development Code. Mr. Clerk, would you like to swear the public in, please?
Thank you, sir. Yes. Anyone wishing to speak to items P 58 through P 61, the zoning items, P 58 through P 61, please stand. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear a testimony you will give in these matters? Is it the truth, so have you gotten? When you come forward, please give your name and address for the record, and acknowledge that you were sworn. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, and if you're going to hear these two together, I would request that you take separate motions on each, on the Comprehensive Plan first, then followed by the zoning. If the public is here to speak for one rather than the other, please identify their comments as being for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment versus the zoning amendment. And they should be given three minutes for each item.
Yes. Okay, so let's start with P 54.
P 54. Again, this was published in the April 30th, 2025 edition Tampa Bay Times, supplemented by certified mailings and site postings, and was continued, for the June 17th Board of County Commissioners Meeting, where it was continued to today.
Okay, thank you. So again, Amy Toll, Planning Development, Economic Growth. Item P 54 is a Comprehensive Plan Amendment. I'll read the ordinance. This is the adoption hearing for the comp plan amendment, so I'll read the ordinance into record. An ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a small-scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment to the future land use map, map 2-15 and sheet 5, from rez 1, residential 1 dwelling unit per gross acre, to rez 9, residential 9 dwelling units per gross acre on approximately 30 acres of real property located on Corella Drive, approximately 231 feet west of the Sun Coast Parkway, and providing for additional text amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for a repeal or severability and effective date. So here's the aerial view of the subject site. As you can see, it's located on the west side of Sun Coast Parkway, just north of Shady Hills area. The project overview is a small-scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment from rez 1, residential 1 dwelling unit per gross acre, to rez 9, residential 9 dwelling units per gross acre, to allow for a maximum development of 186 fee simple townhomes on approximately 30 acres. The location is on the north side of Corella Drive, bounded by Ann Hurst Lane, to the east and approximately 231 feet west of Sun Coast Parkway. There is a companion rezoning petition in the name of Arcola Shady Hills MPUD. Subject site is located in the North Market area. And the context map shows the subject site with the red star adjacent to Cruz Lake Middle School and Mary Giella Elementary School. You can see Corella Drive there, as well as Shady Hill Drive and Sun Coast Trail. Here's a transportation network context map to show Old Pasco Road, which is the applicant. Or I'm sorry, this is.
What?
That's not right. That's, that's not right. That's not Old Pasco Road. We'll fix that. That's Corella. That's the subject site. So as you can see, Shady Hills, Shady Hills Drive is currently on the CIP from Corella Drive to Bosley Drive. Peace Boulevard is highlighted here as well to show that there is a bus stop in proximity to the subject site. Cruz Lake Middle and Mary Giella Elementary School, as well as Shady Hills Drive in proximity to the subject site. You can see it is, it is also close to the Sun Coast Parkway, which has amenities or proximity to the Sun Coast Parkway Trail. So subject site is located around public facilities and school systems as well. So this is the existing future land use to rez 1, or it is rez 1. The proposed future land use to rez 9. The Comprehensive Plan Consistency, so the proposed amendments consisted with the following Comprehensive Plan policies. Policy flew 1.1.2, concentration of urban densities. Policy HSG 1.1.2, Comprehensive Plan Amendments. Policy flew 1.4.3, transitional land uses. Policy flew 8.1.5, North Market Area. And policy flew 1.10.1, compatibility review. And with that, we recommend approval of the proposed Comprehensive Plan and adopt the ordinance by roll call vote. If you'd like, I can bring staff up for the MPUD rezoning, and just go ahead into that presentation as well.
Madam Chairman, I need to clarify. The proof of publication that I gave before was for the plan amendment. There is a separate, for the record, there is a separate proof of publication in the Tampa Bay Times, July 23rd, 2025, for the zoning part of this discussion.
Okay. Do we read in the other one as well, or do we stop?
If you're, if you're going to take consolidated public comment, yes, you're going to have to open both items.
But I'm asking if we do that right now? Because I don't remember how we do it when we put them together.
Yes.
Okay, so you're going to read the P, whatever the other one is?
61. We can go through that presentation for P 61 as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Good afternoon. William Vermillion, Planning Development, Economic Growth. This is PDE 257850, Arcola Shady Hills MPUD. The location map. This is a rezoning request from AR Agricultural Residential to MPUD Master Planned Unit Development to allow for the development of a maximum of 186 platted townhomes on approximately 28 acres. This is on the north side of Corella Drive, 1,200 feet from the intersection of Corella and Shady Hills. This is the subject site location. This is current zoning map, the future land use map. Here is the overall contextual map of the location. And for the purposes of this, I have asked Tony, after this discussion, to pull up Pasco Mappers, so we can see a wider view of the area when we're talking about some of the pedestrian infrastructure improvements that are going to be occurring along Shady Hills Road. So here you can see Mary Giella Elementary School to the south, as well as Cruz Lake Middle School going towards the east. This project will be improving portions of substandard Corella from their project access to the elementary school, as well as installing pedestrian facilities on both the north and south sides of the road. The, as well as safe pedestrian flashers for the students to cross the street towards the elementary school. It should be noted that PDE has communicated with the school board on this and the pedestrian facilities that currently exist at the school. There's currently a gate at the elementary school that's locked. And upon completion of these pedestrian improvements, per Mr. Williams with the school board, that pedestrian gate will be unlocked to facilitate students' travel to the elementary school outside of the drive aisles of the school, as well as a school safety officer being placed at that gate. The sidewalk outside of the subject boundaries, it's a portion of the fiscal year 2026 construction plans, is currently at 30% design. That improvement goes all the way north to Bosley Drive, with the, the five-foot sidewalk from Cruz Lake to Bosley, which will connect the gap from the pathway on the south side, built by North Pasco Corporation Center and the Sun Coast Trail. This project for fiscal year 2026 is also providing a pedestrian beacon at Green Glen Lane, which is the area that the commission will be familiar with, is the, the current side of the baseball fields and the, the county park. They are going to be putting in a, a safe pedestrian beacon there with the sidewalk to the south of Green Glen Lane to the county park entrance. The county is also constructing a traffic signal within fiscal year 2026 at Bosley Drive intersection with Shady Hills Road, and a traffic signal, traffic signal at Little Ranch Road in fiscal year 2026 to support the new fire station on the west of Shady Hills Road. This is the MPUD master plan. But more importantly, here's the binding concept plan showing a centralized park with the platted townhomes in a, in a, designed in a grid manner with the stub outs both to the north and to Ann Hurst. The connection to Ann Hurst will not be made now, either as emergency or as a functional access until the time that Ann Hurst is approved to county standards. It's currently a dirt road that's serving as essentially a private driveway for residents that live over there on the, on Ann Hurst. You can see here depicted as well in the red dotted line, the pedestrian facilities on the north side of Corella, which will be going to the pedestrian facilities at the school and the middle school, and then on the south side to Mary Giella, all the way out to the sidewalks and pedestrian facilities that are being constructed out along Shady Hills Road, and then in fiscal 2026, when construction kicks off, all the way north to Bosley. The widening of Shady Hills Road is within the cost feasible plan for NPOs 2050 long-range transportation planning in the 2041 to 2050 time slot. There is increased buffering with this MPUD along the east side to Ann Hurst for those existing neighbors. We're doing 20 feet instead of the code required 15, with a six-to-eight-foot tall opaque fence. The linear shade trees, as well as the shrubs. With that, there's one variation request for this MPUD from 901611, which is street design and dedication requirement, street access to adjoining property. This project site could not directly connect to the, to the middle school site on the east. The school board didn't want that connection, as most of their, their track and field activities happen over there, as well as another myriad of safety reasons. And in which case, staff is in support of this variation because of that enhanced pedestrian mobility that I just spoke to, as well as the safe crossings to allow the students here to get from both the elementary school to the middle school. This comes with a recommendation of approval with conditions from both the planning commission and the Planning and Development Economic Growth Department. I'm here for any questions.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
As we're going to hear both these things, I want to thank Will and Rob for going out with us. We went out on the site. We met on Wednesday morning to talk about this project. Thursday morning at 6:30 in the morning, these gentlemen get up in the morning to go see what the traffic was like, and I give them. And I give them great kudos for going out there, taking the time to make that happen because you didn't have to do it, but I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Tony, if you would just play the videos we talked a little bit. He's going to show you a series of videos that while we're in the truck, they were actually able to see. So we've heard many people from Shady Hills in the past few years talk about Shady Hills Road. And I think we just heard that it's not going to be built till 2041 on the 2050 plan. The traffic that's out there right now, this is coming from the south near 52, heading up toward a school that's being built a little bit below Del Webb. I mean, a school that's already in place, built below Del Webb. The traffic is intense all the way down. You'll see another development even coming onto the side, which is going to add to more traffic. It's not even part of this traffic mix yet. You can fast forward a little bit, I guess. I don't know if you can or not. Shows you a little bit further. It's just a steady flow of traffic all the way through entryway into Quail Ridge where some construction is going on. It's just steady, steady, steady. And that's coming out of the school where they got a really big loop, but the loop is still being blocked from above to come out here. You've got to try to get out. And again, it's a two-lane road with three schools, four schools on it that go. And I want to say that Ripper and Barbara Willhite were great putting the Shady Hills Elementary turn lane in there, which helped a lot, but here's one with just a huge turn lane or access lane going in and around the school, but still, you still get traffic. And if we're going to put industrial, I mean, you'll see in a little bit, you'll see Seneca trucks that are lined up trying to get out, going through the traffic. And if we're going to build for creating jobs and we can't fix the traffic, all the industrial jobs we're trying to bring in, all the jobs we're going to try to create, if you don't have the traffic fixed, it's going to be hard residential development before this road is done.
Was that the school on the right? I'm sorry.
That was the school on the right, yes. Now it frees up for a bit. Del Webb's coming up, and you'll see Del Webb to put a nice sidewalk running up here, which is good to get down to there, but won't see a lot of action to it. All right, you can flip to the end of this one, I think. Go to the next one. Now you're coming back the other way. Look at all the traffic coming back the other way as we're getting up to the schools now.
That road, there's no shoulder, there's nothing.
You're going south or you're going north?
We're heading north now. And this is the traffic heading to the south.
And no streetlights, I see.
Yeah, and look at, there's no trail on the side either. You've got dirt bikes, dirt roads for kids to go back and forth on. So even if you're trying to commute and try to come out of these, one of these side streets, think about how difficult it's going to be to get out there, too. And this truck can't even make it through this intersection that's right here. He's got to go in the other lane to get over there. So clearly not built for even big industrial stuff yet. I mean, this road needs to get done. And part of what we're seeing, too, with all that traffic coming down from the south, is all those improvements up in Spring Hill, Hernando County, are now finding, this is a great shortcut to come down. But again, we can't, there's a truck from Seneca trying to get out, that got out. There's just more traffic from, just getting to view as we're turning back around, we're going to head down. And I think we're heading down to Cruz Lake at this point. Go ahead to the next one. So working our way down is Cruz Lake Elementary, which is on the left-hand side. You see, we actually got a sheriff's deputy in the intersection that's allowing just for the buses to go to the left. And there's another car to the side, another sheriff's deputy, sitting out there just kind of watching for traffic or whatever may go on. So in Cruz Elementary on the left, that's the turn where the things go. But look at the traffic just coming down here. And we haven't even opened up for the prime time with the schools yet. Now, are all these people going to come down to this intersection and take a left turn? Might be a lighter, too, before we get there. Now, I want to say this, Cruz Lake did a great job on their design because they can take their flow going in and around. It does a good job. But all the traffic that's out front getting in is where this thing all gets clogged up. And we had that accident a few years ago. I think Mr. Stark in Oakley were on with me when we had the middle school student come before us, asking for a light at Southwind. That's the light that we put in, and thank God we did. But again, the traffic that's in this area right here, this quadrant now, for the next hour or so, is pretty intense. So Cruz Lake's going to open up here at 8:30, and the traffic in there is going to be moving, but it's light to light to light backed up. I'm not sure if, I think we're going to go in front here. All right, so you're going to go in front. And in the front, you're going to see people that are crossing over to the side. This is back a little bit later, seems a little bit later in the day, there's a second And here's people on Mary Giella Elementary, it's about 9:30. These people are crossing over the road, going into the back, dropping off the kids as this traffic is just like churning around. So Mary Giella is on the south side of Corella Drive. And when this thing goes up, it lines up. We got in line at 9:17 when this traffic started to move a little bit in. They didn't open until 9:30, and the traffic lined up out in the back of Corella all the way to, not only to the front of Cruz Lake, but the other development that's right beside it coming in with 280 more homes that aren't even built yet, that's going to add to Corella Drive traffic. Is there most of their access coming in? It's going to be going up that way as well. It just shows you more traffic here stuck. All right, go ahead and flip to the next one. Last one, okay.
Now, what are those cars?
I'm trying to see where we're going here. It's on Shady Hills, heading down. That's back in front of the school, Charter School again. So my point, too, is this, you've got a road that's two-lane, you don't have sidewalks, trails, except for small parts of it, not where all the kids are coming from yet, but some of the infrastructure is getting filled in. But the road needs to be improved before you're going to put more density. You've got 280 homes being built on Corella Drive to the south side. It's got one access point out on Shady Hills Road, but most of the access they just built in is going to be going on Corella, taking the light and coming out either heading north-south because if you can't go out and go one way or the other, you're going to go head the light, which most people do. So all that traffic, that's 280 homes coming on Corella Drive, just to keep my little dead-end road, all that's going to be thrown in, and now you're going to add another 180 homes. I think in time, this development is very appropriate, but before we bury these people with more traffic out there and more issues out there, with our own job creators that are out there, like Seneca's stuck in traffic here. I mean, if these guys take a long time to get there, they're not going to put more industrial in it, more jobs to be created. And we've got 300 acres of industrial land out there ready to come in, but it's going to slow even stagnate that down if we dump more traffic in that area until we're ready for it.
All right, so I need to let the applicant present, and she's requested 10 minutes. And so she's been granted that, and then we can have more discussion and hear from the public.
Good afternoon. Barbara Willhite, 86, 27 Graham Boulevard, Newport Ritchie, for the applicant. I just did a combined presentation for both the comp plan and the MPUD. I will work very hard not to be repetitive because you have now heard a lot about this area. Do you know where it's at? This is the land use map. You've heard about the industrial. You know Gary's Plastics is there with their two buildings. There's 300 acres of industrial, as been alluded to. The PSP, Employment Centers, there's a lot of employment that the county has driven here. The county's requested that this employment go here. So it's only natural that the new development, the homes, will follow, and that's what you're This is our binding concept plan. It's a greened-up version than the one that's in your packet. What's interesting about this is that this client agreed to do no eight-unit buildings.
I was counting.
So they're all sixes, so no eight-unit buildings. We have a Central Park feature, which exceeds the land development code requirements. We were context-sensitive to our projects, our development to the east, to the existing homes to our east, enhanced buffer. The client wanted to have a grand entrance to this. This is NVR Homes. They do a very nice product. These are just a list of some of the different things that we did. Enhanced the buffer to the east. Currently, Ann Hurst Lane sits on the client's property. We're providing right-of-way. Not only did we limit the number of units per building, we also said our product's going to be a minimum of 24 feet product. A lot of times, you're proving 18, 16, 18, 20. This client is committed to the larger townhome units at 24. Max was six units per building. Our density sits at 6.59 units per acre. That's a pretty low density for a townhome project. We've compliance with and exceed PM 26. We exceed PM 26 because we have dedicated visitor parking, 0.25 spaces per unit outside of the driveways, and we are exceeding the parks requirement. We have a 2.25 acre park with only 1.86 acres required. I don't see that very often in any of my presentations. Usually, everybody's trying to get out of your park requirements. This project is actually exceeding your park requirements. You've heard a lot about the off-site improvements. We partnered with the school board. The school board told us what they wanted to do. We said yes, and we did exactly what they asked us to do. They were actually surprised that we didn't question anything they wanted, and we didn't. The path on the south side's an eight-foot path, and it goes from Shady Hills Road all the way to the Suncoast Trail. There's significant infrastructure going in, bike-ped infrastructure, that I don't see in many parts of this county. And some of it, you heard William talk about the county's portion, what the county's doing, but developers are doing their piece, too. You can see our piece, both the sidewalk improvements in coordination and the crossing in coordination with the school board, this multi-use path that nobody asked us for on the south side, but we decided to do as an amenity for this community to get, so people aren't driving down Corella Drive on their bikes or walking down with their strollers to get to the Suncoast Trail. They have easy, you know, safe access on a multi-use path. Developers have filled in, when you go south of Corella, Softwood Intersections, developers have filled in that portion. When you go underneath the Suncoast Parkway, both sides, that's the Pulte Project, are filling in that infrastructure. So there is a, the county's doing their part, and developers are exceeding the requirements and doing their part. In this area, these homes will be able to walk to both an elementary school that's under capacity, a middle school that's under capacity, quite under capacity, that middle school is. They'll be able to walk to work. They'll have trails that get them to the Suncoast Trail easily, which goes north and south for miles. You can, I mean, that's a biker's dream. You can get to Cruz Lake Park all without getting in your car. This infrastructure, this is a lot of infrastructure that's going in here. So I wanted to just point that out. Some county-driven and some developer-driven. This is the product elevations for NVR's product. As you can see, there's attention to the landscaping, there's attention to all the things, the stucco, the facades, the breaking it up, the monotony control, architectural features, attention to all those things that you all have asked for, for these types of projects, in addition to making sure they're a platted project with an HOA, which has been, another thing that's been important to the commissioners. These are the impact and mobility fees. You can see the generation. The mobility fees alone will generate about 1.4 million. So with that, let me just see if I had any other notes I wanted to hit before rebuttal. I know you have some public comment, so I will save anything else. I would just, transportation-wise, we meet all the requirements. I mean, I can go through and have Steve Henry talk up here and tell you how he did his analysis pursuant to land development code, both his needs assessment and his timing and phasing meets the requirements of your code. There are no failures that are created as a result of this project. And that would be it. I will listen to public comment, and I look forward to coming back and talking to you
I did have a question. I don't know if it's to Barbara or Steve or someone. When did you say Shady Hills was getting widened? I heard that some parts were getting approved, and I heard the whole thing's being done at a certain time. What, do we have a timeline?
Yeah. William Vermillion, Planning Development Economic Growth. It's within the 2041 to 2050 time band of the Affordable Plan for its budgeting.
So there's, so none of the, are there any other improvements coming from any of the developments? What's a list of the improvements that are being required to be done by the developers in the area? Turn lanes, any sidewalks, anything?
Sure. So I spoke to the county's obligation, building pedestrian facilities within, construction within fiscal year 2026, from the subject site's intersection north to Bosley Drive.
And I have no idea where Bosley is.
Right, so I had Tony preemptively pull up an aerial of the location because I'd like to orient everyone. And before I continue, the real reason I came up here, we did submit latex portages that came in and to the clerk's office. I just wanted to make that clarification, but it turned out perfect that I came up here.
Where's Bosley?
Tony, if you'll zoom out and go north, you can zoom out a little more. So eventually, you'll start seeing, so just, it's tough for me to see from here. You're close to the computer. When you see Bosley, stop. And then whenever I talk about Green Glen, that's where the baseball fields and the county park are, where the pedestrian crossings and some signalizations occurring in the area.
Just type it in.
It's way up there, actually.
Yeah, it's very far north, which was to my point.
Okay, so what's happening, what's happening between there and Bosley?
There is pedestrian facilities going in along Shady Hills Road from this intersection where the infrastructure is currently being built by the townhome development the Commissioner Mariano referenced to the south. It's Corella Estates to the south side of Corella Drive, 176 townhomes. Along Shady Hills Road, there's pedestrian facilities being built by that development as you come underneath the Suncoast, north to Corella, and then the county is picking up construction of the sidewalk from this intersection all the way north to Bosley along Shady Hills Road.
It's a sidewalk, it's not a multi-use path.
Correct. That is the first phase that's budgeted.
I was just thinking, people, sidewalks don't, well, it's better than nothing, doesn't give a whole lot of mobility. All right. What's the name of those fields? I've been there.
Shady Hills. That is Green Glen that I was referencing before with the county park and the baseball fields there, where additional pedestrian pathways are going in, and the pedestrian beacons along the south side of that aid in pedestrian movement to the park from Shady Hills.
Okay, that was my question. Any other questions, board members? Or do you want to hear?
If you could, go down to show Corella Drive again and show those 176 other townhomes are going to be.
Yes, sir.
Right there in that wedge, right?
Yeah, you can see the grading that's occurred there.
Yeah, those are built.
They're not occupied yet. So all that traffic you saw has nothing to do with that coming on board, and I think Del Webb's still under construction, too, which is going to bring more. And another place below that, it being built, as we saw, is going to come online. And again, two-lane road. Try to imagine all those side streets you saw going up with those big lots, people trying to get out. It's going to be dangerous. And I will give a shout-out to Barbara again for doing a great job working with Ripper when we, and I want to thank the board for taking that project, which was going to be a year coming into construction. We got that turn lane to Shady Hills Elementary, which is above here, which is, I think, would be a great asset. People are very appreciative of that. But again, we don't have the capacity to put all these extra trips on here. And your traffic studies, you can hear all the traffic studies you want, but if they don't factor in the developments that are coming in, they don't help, and they don't show you a true road. And keep in mind, Corella Drive now is just that little road coming out to Southwind, which is elevated intersection, difficult intersection to get in and out. You're just going to jam up all that traffic.
Well, should we take public comment? And we'll take public comment first on the comp plan, and then we will take public comment on the rezoning.
No.
No?
Just take public comment, but if they're speaking to both the Comprehensive Plan and the Land Development Code and the rezoning, then they're entitled to six minutes, three for each.
Do we have folks who have signed up?
We have one person signed up, Pastor Jen Kerwick.
Hi there, Pastor Jen Kerwick, 15925 Green Glen Lane, Shady Hills, Florida. And I'm a pastor, so all six minutes is mine, hate to tell you. So anyway, I'm coming today, and I did send a PowerPoint presentation.
I may have missed it. Did you say you were sworn?
I did not say, but yes, sir, I was sworn.
Okay, thank you.
It's on record with video.
Thank you.
Okay, can you start my six minutes back? Okay, can you start my six minutes back? So I did submit.
Here, you can use that to do the slides.
Oh, okay. Oh, very nice. Haven't done this before. Okay. Okay, so I just did like old-school, went to look at the comprehensive plan based on what is out there currently. I hear a lot about what's coming, but unfortunately, we just heard Shady Hills Road widening isn't coming until 41 to 45, or something is what I think he said. So really, you know, the comp plan shows that, you know, in regards to the protection of the environment, foundation for growth management, this is what is out there now. And when you're looking at growth management, you know, the concerns that I had with regards to this, this particular project, maintenance of established residential neighborhoods, protection of rural and agricultural areas, which it is, provision of adequate service and facilities. I took that to be the widening of the road, providing a good road. Right now, the Crellla townhomes on the south side of Crellla Drive have created a significant issue as a result of like flooding into the neighbors' properties because of the road there on, that is currently there. Also additionally, you know, the growth management principles. I took a look at this, protecting rural neighborhoods and effectively limits urban sprawl. So unfortunately, you know, and again, I, you know, didn't go to school for this. I'm just trying to show the things that I have seen that seem to be that this plan is not consistent with the current comprehensive plan. Relies upon a lands acquisition program that is designed to preserve key ecosystems and protect wildlife, water resources, and natural areas. Again, a solid infrastructure support system. And I'm just going to say, I, you know, the sidewalks, when they're speaking to infrastructure, they're speaking to sidewalks. And I got to say that if, you know, myself being a businessperson, if I had the ability to do sidewalks instead of throw my change into the piggy bank to widen the road, I'd pick the sidewalks, too. I'm not going to lie to you. But the reality of it is, is that there are, you are relying on the fact that the infrastructure is going to support these. It doesn't, I mean, there's also Dell Web that I don't think anybody, if they purchased a home, I don't believe it's finished yet. Just the models are, they just did a grand opening in July, I want to say, the beginning or mid-part of July. So, you know, you're not taking into consideration, I believe it was 1,200 homes going into there. And, you know, the traffic study says, you know, we're hoping for whatever it is per townhome, like it's like 1.67 cars or something like that, which I don't understand that, but. And so, you know, the concern is that, you know, this is supposed to embody the design to build long-term community value. We're relying on the fact that somebody's going to put a Publix in the middle of Shady Hills because they have to drive many miles to get to a Publix. The reality is, right now, the only thing that people in Shady Hills can use is their cars because we did get, we don't have the bus system anymore that was serving that particular area. And so we're relying on cars. That's it, period, point blank. There was a study, and I'll go, oh, what I want to. There was in 2002, I founded, um, 2002 FDOT did a study for the need for improvement along CR 578 corridor, and the blow was established. There was a need for improvement, the current substandard traffic operations within the study area that also included Shady Hills Road. And we know that Mariner is like five lanes. They have two lanes on each side plus a turning lane. And then they dump into Shady Hills, two-lane roads. And so the concern then is, is that if we're looking at 2041 to 2045, there is zero chances that anyone can look at this and think that it's safe for the residents. There are accidents that happen all the time, right in front of the church, right? And I see those accidents. And unfortunately, I saw a young man lose his life to an accident. And there were four accidents that took place within 45 minutes. As a result of one accident, where? At Crellla Drive, Crellla and Southwind. There was a major accident that took out a power pole that created three additional accidents that ended up with a young man, 18 years old, losing his life. And I appreciate, like, I literally came and spoke to many of you and asked, please, if you can put a crosswalk there, flashing lights, something, you know, because there was a gentleman that was, there was a young man that was killed there. And so I think morally, ethically, it is, it is absolutely not ethical, nor is it moral for you to sit in a position to vote something like this in. It's just not. And so therefore, I ask, based on this information and for the safety of the people of Shady Hills community, I ask that you deny this today. Thank you.
No, no clapping, sorry. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this item?
We have no one else signed up online. And the only person we have, I'm sorry, in person and online, we don't believe that person is connected, so.
Okay, does the applicant want to come back up?
There any, anyone else?
There anybody else in the audience that wants to speak on this item? You asked who was signed up.
Oh, okay.
Close public comment, applicant rebuttal.
Thank you again for the opportunity to talk to you again. Commissioner Starkey, I would say the sidewalk versus the multi-use path, all the developer projects are all multi-use paths. Your project's a sidewalk.
Yeah.
So we are hearing you and your desire for multi-use paths. All of the infrastructure that the developers have put in to aid with putting together the system of pedestrians and bikes can move are all eight-foot paths. We are making improvements to a portion of Crellla that's substandard. Most of, most of Crellla meets your standard requirements up to the school. Then it goes substandard, we're making that improvement. We don't have any impacts at the intersection of Crellla and the intersection where it's the signalized intersection that would cause us to do any mitigation there. I would add, let me just talk a little bit about the public comment. I do appreciate the, going through the comprehensive plan. It is a complex document that I'm an expert in because I wrote a lot of it in 2006. And you have goals, objectives, and policies. Goals are just goals, objectives are just objectives, and policies are what you implement. And then you implement those policies in your conference, in your land development code. So I didn't see anything in the presentation, other than just kind of picking words. But as far as, is anything there that had any substance? As far as Publix goes, it isn't, I anticipate in the, in the other half of Pulte, Pulte did the Dell Web side, the east side of Shady Hills Road. The other half has commercial entitlements. I assume, I think there'll be retail there when the rooftops come in. And I, and I, there will be sidewalks and multi-use paths to get folks from what you're doing up to Bosley, all the way down to that, ultimately to that retail. So there will be ability to get out of your car and, and go to retail locations when that retail comes and the retail follows the, the house, the house tops. I did take a note of something that Pastor said, that our, we would rather throw our change in the piggy bank versus sidewalk. So that's actually not the case. We're doing the off-site improvements, and we're also, we're also doing mobility fees with 1.4 million. But all of my clients that I have entitled, helped them entitle property along here have done more. And so this client is willing to do more than what we just told you today. They're willing to advance mobility fee payments, which I haven't had any client that's ever said will do that. And that's so you can use it to do a route study. You can use it towards a route study. You do not have a route study on your CIP. You're working on your CIP now, so you can make those decisions. But you could start a process that gets you to, to somewhere where you can get a plan for this road so that the citizens have an answer as to what, when are you going to do something with this road? And what's the process? So doing our part, and it's certainly not pennies, the client would be willing to pay half of their mobility fees, about 700,000, when you issue them a site development permit, which allows them to start clearing dirt. And then another, the other half, when they get the CO for their second building. Their first building is their model center. That gets them up and going. They start selling. They can pay, prepay the rest of their mobility fees. So that's trying to be part of a solution that you all can come up with to move Shady Hills Road forward. Each one of my projects has tried to come up with a solution, you know, to do something. And, and that is our something we're offering today to, you know, to listening to the community. You know, we, I worked with Commissioner Mariano to get the thousand-foot queuing lane on Shady Hills Road. We're putting in all the infrastructure. We're doing all the gaps where the county's not doing sidewalks and pedestrian improvements. And we'd like for your support. This is a great project, great developer, and I think it's going to complement your, all your efforts to have an employment center here, which is an effort forever, was to put together an area where people can work, and they can live, they can go to school, and then they can recreate. And this is something that's been in the works for a long time. So if you have any questions or want to talk to any of my team members, I have them all here. But I wanted to offer that to you all as a, as a, be part of the solution. Thank you.
I have, I have a question, just wondering, you know, we're trying to make an effort to save existing oak trees when possible. Will the developer be able to save some of those existing trees in that village, that, that center green? Or is he planning on knocking everything down and putting?
Jeremy Couch, our project engineer from Tampa Civil. Would be happy to talk to you about that.
Trying to figure it out here.
Commissioner Jeremy Couch with Tampa Civil, 17937 Hunting Bow Circle. I have been sworn, I am the project engineer. It, Commissioner Starkey, it definitely is our goal to preserve as many of the good, healthy trees within our center corridors as we can. The vision is, you pull in, you see a really mature area prior to splitting out to the areas where we do have to do a lot of grading to make it drain and not flood and things like that. So it is our goal to save as many as possible.
What about the oak trees on the west border line between you and the school?
So the areas that we can retain trees at the natural grade, we're going to keep every one we can. It's one less tree we would plant, a mature tree we can keep, and it makes the community look better and sell better.
I'm really torn because I think the road needs widening, but I also think they're following all our rules. So, you know, I, I'm really torn here. I'm wondering about widening the road, if we could jump ahead and at least widen sooner, the road from Crellla to whatever retail, commercial area is coming in. I don't, trying to see it on here, but I don't see it on the Dell Web property. But I'll, go ahead, Commissioner, wait.
Uh, I guess staffer, Barbara, you said a maximum of 186 platted townhomes? Is that the total that's being built? Or is it going to be less than that?
186.
186, okay. Well, this, this specific, so this type of townhome project, why don't you bring, bring forward more projects that are designed and look like this through other parts of the, of the county? Looking at this design and how it's laid out, in my opinion, I think it's setting a new precedent for what we want to see as far as variety of townhome product and type and amenity and lifestyle and park size, green space, you name it. Another, something just to think about, not to get off topic, but when we're looking at our, our trees, you'll see the oaks being, you know, will build up, and then the oaks are left in lower-lying areas and water rushes into it during storm events, and then the oaks, they drown. So it's kind of pointless. It's, my opinion, it's, it's a developer saying, oh, we're going to keep the tree, but a storm comes through and it falls down, and then it's, that's a lot cheaper way to deal with, with trees on project sites. So just something I've, I've recognized and took commissioners, the chairs, to the chair's point. But with Shady Hills Road, I think it's time. Shady Hills Road, for, for a long time, you know, was a quiet place. And for whatever reason, the market in the Shady Hills corridor got hot. And it got hot very quickly. And the county has, looking at the history of the Shady Hills Road and the whole site, has, has advocated, past boards, many, many, many years to say, hey, we want this to be employment site, we want people here. And it's happened, and it's happened very quickly. And that's just due to the nature of the market, whether it was, you know, COVID and politics that drove people here, for whatever reason. But business is knocking on the corridor, it's coming in, which is a great thing. It's people to work, have a nice places to live and work, and two schools that are under capacity that now, you know, are right there. But what we need to do, as the market has shifted and people have shifted, government is not flexible. And I think with this market being the way that it is and all the attention and, and, and the market-driven moves towards this space, we've got to move up the timeline to improve Shady Hills Road. I don't know how we do it, but 41 to 50 is not acceptable. I think if we don't do it sooner than later, it kills this market dynamic that's happening in this segment of our county, especially with the veterans right there and all the action that's going on up in Hernando because a lot of that traffic, you know, it's coming down south. Belmy Brothers is, is facing the same thing, but that's a different, a different environment. It doesn't have the economic drivers behind it that Shady Hills has and that's been set aside for many, many years for, to attract businesses to come in. So my, my concern is less with the, with this townhome product, but more for the greater, the greater picture of how folks are traveling up and down Shady Hills and getting to 52 and the veterans and back up to Hernando, and then the folks that live in between, and, you know, the life that's in between. I think it's incumbent, this, this market's here. It's, it sees something in this area that, that's special and, and it's, it's, it's driving activity. So we, we need to, to figure out a way how to start widening this road and get it done. And I'd be willing to move it ahead of some other projects and, and start getting it fixed, you know, sooner than later. That's just pivoting with the market and being nimble. And the market doesn't, I think government needs to do the same.
It's just money, Commissioner Oakley.
Yeah. I, I've been looking at Shady Hills Road for quite a while because it does seem very, very congested at times. But also, some of the issues with Shady Hills Road is the schools that are actually on that were built, built way back, not, not new, to take the, the people driving their kids to school. Years ago, most parents were putting their kids on a school bus and the school bus delivered to the, to the school. They didn't have to worry about stacking. In today's time now, those can, even on the east side, and there are some more of these on the east, the west side also, they're having to take, there's very few kids riding buses anymore. They're actually being driven there by their parents, which has caused a different scenario. And the schools weren't built, built for stacking cars to come into school. Creates an, an issue with traffic. This particular development, which I like, and I like to see more of these in the county and other areas, but they have the walkability there where the parents could walk their kid to the school rather than get in a car and, and drive out in the traffic. So I think that's a plus for this development where it's at. I think I feel the same sentiments that, that y'all do about the fact that we need to move Shady Hills Road. And I've been thinking of that for a long time. And even when we were making room for other developments coming here, developing in this area, the road hadn't changed any. It's, it's still the same road. But I think somehow we need to work out of where we get monies and be able to move that forward. The credits coming from this project and the other projects will build up. But I, if I'm not mistaken, I thought this was a 50- I'm not mistaken, I thought this was a $57 million fix, and it's very, very expensive. But I'd rather have it done sooner than later. And hopefully we can go to the legislature and some other places to help with some of these roads. So we got, we got to reach out, find grants and all that can help us in this kind of area to help build these roads out, but I feel good about the project.
Commissioner Mariano.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I want to say, I appreciate the board's efforts, you know, for putting the investments in to take up the Bosley, to put the trail in, work, making, working with Barbara, frankly, working with Del Webb, putting the trail up, getting another project to put the project in front of them on, it's great. I mean, it's a great start, but what concerns me is just, it's, there's just so much more to do, and the expense of it is huge. What bothers me even with the state is like, let's face it, we've tried to work on County Line Road now pretty heavy with our commissioners above saying how much important it was, and did you see anything with County Line Road the last two years? Nothing. We had some pretty strong people up in Hernando County, they got nothing done for County Line Road. And, you know, as, as you mentioned, Commissioner Waitman, I think a lot of the traffic that was going down to Bellamy got frustrated down there, and a lot of them people have shifted over here, so you know what, there's another way we can go, and they're coming down here. So, and Commissioner Oakley, as you, as you mentioned, what's happened, it's been a dramatic change, it's made this even worse than it was just a few years back, is now instead of a mile radius for driving to, to, to school, now it's two miles out. So yeah, most of the kids are being driven now, so all of a sudden, that problem that wasn't so bad is worse. Now with the developments that we've approved already, to throw more onto it, and I'll tell you, with all this traffic on that short little Crellla Drive, that you're going to have two big developments that are going to be right there, going up there and going around, to the intersection, and not only do we have someone die this year, but a principal is one who died when we put the Southwind light in, it's, it's going to cause some, some trouble out there. There's going to be some accidents and it's going to, it's going to get, it's going to get worse. I think the development itself is great. I mean, it'll be, in the right time, it'll be great, it's just, right now, if you do it, I think the burden you're going to put on that road, the traffic, I think you're really going to hurt your economic development. So all that industrial, if you've got people that can't get out on the road, you know, these big trucks, and you saw the one truck coming out of the light on Platinum Drive that was coming to light, one of the first scenes we had, he had to cross the lane over because the intersection's not built for it. You've got that situation up and down, and you've got some commercial stuff that even if it could come right now, if they can't get their trucks out, it's, it's, it's not going to get to the jobs. So by putting in this residential ahead of the jobs, I think what you do is you actually hurt the job creation potential that it's got. And that was part of the reason when this was looked at many, many years ago, to take our industrial corridor all the way down from Sunlake, bring it all the way up through Bexley, we included this area of Shady Hills to create jobs up here for these folks. But if you put too much residential and people can't get around, you can't move goods and services, I think you're going to hurt the, the commercial growth as well. So for that reason, I'd love to work with the developer, I'd love to work with everyone here to try to get this road done, but I think if you throw this on, you're just going to like, cause more gridlock out there and it's going to be a dangerous situation. And, and one more thing. One thing about zoning is you've got stricter rules to follow, but when you're doing a comp plan change, you've got all the flexibility in the world to say, you know what, it's just not the right time for it. You're not bound by the same thing with the zoning. So when you hear the comp plan, you've got flexibility to say, we just don't like it.
Chair.
Yep.
Your point, your points are, the issue with, with commerce, again, this goes back to the road, the challenges with the logistics of the businesses are going to be there whether or not this, this project makes it through. Those, they're, the challenges with everything that's coming online within this whole corridor, all up County Line, all the way back down, are, are going to be there, and whether or not this project makes it through, it's, it's going to compound as, as more comes online. That's why in, in the bigger scope of this conversation, we need to, we need to really look at this corridor and bump it up to start, to start work on, on this north-south corridor. We're, we're not moving quick enough on our north-south corridors between Pasco and Hernando anyway, far as through traffic. I mean, we, Hernando and Pasco, you know, it's like Pasco and, and Hillsborough now, where people are coming south and coming back north. Hernando has enough activity to where we're kind of in a similar scenario. And so irregardless of, of this project, is, is stuff that's been approved, come online, the businesses are going to be hemmed up with, with moving, so we need to, we need to figure out, understand funding and what, what projects we have there and not wait till 2041. I mean, if I'm fortunate, I'll still be around and maybe will come that time or 2050.
Hey, hey, hey.
But, you know. I think I made my point there. So, you know, thanks.
Commissioner Waitman, it, you know, I think we all, I'd love for that road to be four-lane right now.
Yeah.
But the reality is, is we get our money to pave these roads with impact fees, and, you know, are we going to increase the impact fee? Are we going to work on our, we're talking about remixing our discounts, which, you know, I've been saying, I thought we needed to look at that for a while, but you're either going to get the money from more impact fees, or you're going to go to our MPO priority list and you're going to cut something. So that's, our challenge is, I mean, our challenge is finding the money and, and where's the pain going to come from? And this is something that's going to be growing on us because Hernando is coming through Pasco, just like we go through Hillsborough and Pinellas. They're coming through us, and it's going to not be pretty for a while. But that's why I'm wondering, would it make sense, at least in the short term, to at least widen, and I'm thinking Crellla is the point, it seems to me it needs to be north of Southwind for the commerce, at least find the money to go from that area to the Publix or whatever's coming, you know, the, where the main traffic's going to be. Can we at least accelerate that widening now while we work on the rest? But at least we've, maybe we're helping a pinch point, a pitch point, and are there other things we can do for Shady Hills? Shoulders, lights? Are there other things that we can do to help make it safer?
Commissioner Mariano.
So I think there are some improvements that can be made. I had worked with the Turnpike Authority, you guys remember a few years back, about trying to get into Cruz Lake?
Yes, I was just looking at that.
That road, that bridge there?
Yeah.
So when I met, when I last met with them, we talked about the park and ride to get done on, on, on the, on the turnpike, it came up in conversation that there's a possibility from Hudson Avenue, which is just below this, just below Del Webb, there's enough room if we shift Shady Hills Road to the side on a redesign, so we're going to talk about redesigning, if we shift that road over, there's enough room for a full interchange for the Turnpike Authority, and it's far enough away from 52 to, to make it warrant where they could actually make that happen.
I think that makes great sense. I was actually wondering, can we do it at Shady Hills? I don't know.
So yeah, so, so we can't do it at the, at the bridge, I was thinking first of Cruz Lake, but down to the south at Hudson Avenue would be cutting across below Del Webb, it would actually fit there, and if you shifted the road enough, you could actually make that work. That's one possibility. I think the other things you got to do is work on the intersection improvements too, as we're trying to do it, but I love the idea from, all the way from 52, at least up to Crellla, to make, make some things happen up there.
Yeah, so it may not be the whole Shady Hills, but at least we, where it's most congested, we get something going there. That's kind of my thoughts. But that's a discussion for, is that an MPO discussion? I don't, I don't know.
Yes.
So we're, we're on to this, so I am glad that the, did the number change when you went to six units a building? Or did you add more buildings to get to the same number? Or, and listen, I'm not, I'm just going to say right here, I'm not a fan of eights, but six, sixes look a lot better. I think this is a nice layout, so.
I think that increased the park space.
Oh, even better. All right. Okay, well, it's, it's to the board.
Which item are we getting?
First would be the comp plan.
Comp plan. I move approval.
Second.
Roll call vote.
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Nay.
District three, Chairman Starkey.
Well, I'm a reluctant yea, and we're going to push to fix those, we're going to work to fix that part of Shady Hills.
Yeah.
So, okay. Okay, now we're on to 60.
61.
61.
On 61, Ms. Willhite had offered up a condition. I didn't get the parameters of it.
Half the mobility fees.
Do you want, do you want to delegate to the county attorney to come up with a condition? Or do you want Barbara to put it on the record? There is, we do need to make it clear that this is a, this is the applicant offering this up because of language in 163 that says you can't have payment before building permit. But I think if the applicant realizes the conditions in the area and they're offering it up as a voluntary commitment.
So yes, by behalf of the applicant, I will put that on the record, that this is a voluntary commitment to be part of a solution. I'll just, we'll work on the language, but the, what it is, is it's half the payment of mobility fees at the time of site development permit issuance, and half of payment, half of the mobility fees at the time of the CO for the seventh bill, seventh unit, because we've got our one, our first six being the model center. So it's the seventh CO, which will be our second building, that will pay the other half. And we'll work on the language.
Clarity, if our fees go up after you've made the first payment, are you committing to pay the difference at CO? Because we're in the middle of a mobility fee update, so it's possible that the fees could increase from the time you made the half payment to the time they're actually due at CO.
That's a good question.
That's why I'm asking. I want to know what the commitment is.
The present rate at the time of payment.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure, that's, I think when we make the payments, that's the fee we'll, we'll pay.
Well, I'm only raising it because arguably we may get less money if, if we're not committing.
Okay, well, maybe we could figure out some language to address that, so that it's fair to us and fair to you, and I, it's hard for me to, to do that right on the fly.
Madam Chair.
But we'll work on the language on that.
Commissioner Oakley.
Yeah, I was just wondering if we could put that in, in the motion for approval, that that be worked out between the county attorney, or is that allowed, or?
As long as, as long as there's enough specifics on the record, we can, we can craft a condition that has been represented to the board, if the board is comfortable with that, yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
And I can put on the record that I don't intend to write this condition so that you, that you lose money. So we, we can, David and I can put our brains together and figure out how to write that, but it's not our intent to do this to prepay and end up paying less. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
I'm going to make a motion for approval, and part of it is, the comp plan is now done, so as I said, you're more restricted to the zoning, so I think now it's more appropriate for that. Kind of like with Saddle Brook, I voted against it because I didn't like land just changed, but when the zoning was, when that was changed, then it changed, so I'm going to support the, support the recommendation by the board, by the staff, and with the conditions Barbara just stated, and just with, as we look at this redesign, that we do look at closer that turnpike or lane that can change and other improvements for the intersections.
Right. I'll second that.
And under discussion, I, I would not have supported this if it was Res 9, I'm just saying that, kind of to staff, but this is like Res 5. something, 6.9 or something, so.
6.6.
I think it's 5.6.
6.6.
What is it?
6.6.
Oh, I think they're.
When you have townhomes, that, that Res unit goes up. A lot of times it fits in a 9, but it won't necessarily be a 9, it might be 7.
9 would have been too much here.
Yeah.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, that one's done. I'm going to check the number that's set in here because.
I'm for.
I'll make sure we don't have an error, I don't know if it matters. All right, next one.
P 55, we have proof of publication in the March 5 Tampa Bay Times, March 5, 2025 edition Tampa Bay Times, for the April 22 Board of County Commissioners meeting, where it was continued to June 17, where it was continued to today.
Good afternoon, Amy Toll with Planning Development and Economic Growth. Item P 55 is an ordinance by Pasco, by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners amending the Pasco County Land Development Code, amending Section 1001 docks and seawalls, Section 1001.1 intent and purpose, Section 1001.4 visibility, Section 1001.5 maximum protection and location of docks and seawalls, creation, creating Section 1001.6 boatlift canopies, Appendix A definitions, and other sections as necessary for internal consistency, providing for applicability repealer, providing for severability, inclusion into the Land Development Code, and an effective date. This item comes with a recommendation of approval. There is a presentation if so desired.
I think you need to give a presentation.
Get the presentation.
All right, staff will be here to do that. Sorry. There is also ex parte communications that were sent as early as.
As a legislative item, you will.
Doesn't matter. Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Amanda Hill, Planning Development and Economic Growth. I'd like to request that the board receive and file the following revised documents for this item, the agenda memo, ordinance amendment text redline, Appendix A definitions redline. Okay. So as a reminder, the intent.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
A motion?
You can't make a motion.
To accept it. No, I would like to request that it's made.
You were asking for the board to receive and file those documents.
Yeah.
Oh, so we need a motion from our own staff? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So as a reminder, the intent of the amendment is to re-adopt text changes to the Pasco County Land Development Code, which were invalidated by the Circuit Court for Pasco County Civil Division in 2023, as well as to provide standards on boatlift canopies. I'll now review some of the concerns that were discussed at the LPA and BCC public hearings held on March 20th and June 17th respectively. The LPA expressed concerns regarding the proposed prohibition of canopies over davids and canopies attached to seawalls in Section 1001.6A1. Staff's research regarding this supports the prohibition in order to reduce the load on the seawall that may not be engineered to support such loads. The LPA also expressed concerns regarding the obstruction of few sheds, which I'll address later in this presentation. Staff did not receive additional documentation from the LPA as to the specific policies and the comp plan that the proposed ordinance was inconsistent with. However, they did recommend that the boatlift canopy should not be a use by right, and recommended to staff that a special exception or conditional use application should be required for the installation of a boatlift canopy. The board expressed concerns regarding the impact of hurricanes on boatlift canopies at the 617 meeting. Staff has identified Section 1001.6A3 and Section 1001.6A4 that attempt to address those public safety concerns, namely that boatlift canopies shall meet or exceed the requirements of awnings and canopies in the Florida Building Code, and that boatlift canopies must be removed and safely stored indoors whenever the public is instructed to do so by a governmental authority based on the weather. The board also expressed concerns regarding the color restrictions and voted to include additional colors, namely white, silver, and gray. Section 1001.6A7 has been revised accordingly. The colors will be, in this proposed amendment, beige, white, silver, light gray, or neutral shades of blue, green, monochromatic, and free of any design unless otherwise stipulated by a homeowners association or a similar entity. The board expressed concerns regarding maintenance of the boatlift canopies. A new standard, Section 1001.6A5, has been added to attempt to address those maintenance concerns, and it requires boatlift canopies to be maintained so as to present a neat, clean appearance. The county may also order the repair or removal of boatlift canopies if the building official determines a boatlift canopy presents an immediate threat to the public health and The board expressed concerns. The board expressed concerns regarding the impact on view sheds. There are multiple standards that are currently included in the proposed amendment to minimize the impact on view sheds, namely the previously mentioned color restrictions, the requirement for the canopy to remain open on all sides in section one thousand and one point six A six. Staff also removed a previously proposed allowance for a twenty-four inch drop curtain around the perimeter of the boat lift canopy and these are all intended to help the canopies blend into the view shed as seen in this image here. There are actually six boat lift canopies in this image, but you can see that they're blending into the existing view shed. Some other notable staff revisions to the dimensional standards in section one thousand and one point six A were completed and that was the main reason for the walk on edits to the documents that were originally with this item. So as a reminder, the dimensions that are included in this section include the height, length, width, horizontal projection, side setback, arch height and maximum projection. The height that was proposed at the six seventeen meeting was fifteen feet. Boatlifts in the county are currently already at fifteen feet from the mean high water line and restricting canopies to the same height would limit what would be practical to permit for the boat lift canopies. So as such, staff is proposing at this hearing that the limit for the height would be five feet above the boat lift structure, not to exceed twenty feet above the mean high water line. The length that was previously proposed at the six seventeen meeting was forty feet. The LDC already governs the maximum length of structures. That is actually a third of the width of the canal and that's existing code language and restricting it to forty feet was considered to be arbitrary as it allows for covers on some boat lifts and restricts it for others and the intent is to allow boat lift covers for all boat lifts. As such, staff is proposing that the standard for the length is actually the length of the boat lift plus the allowable horizontal projection. The width that was proposed at the six seventeen meeting was eighteen feet and staff is proposing that that is updated to the actual width of the boat lift plus the allowable horizontal projection and this is because the width is already governed by the side use lines in section one thousand and one point five. The horizontal projection was previously proposed as a maximum of two feet at the six seventeen meeting and staff kept that two foot maximum. However, we also added an additional requirement for a maximum of one foot for docks that are located within an aquatic preserve and this is a matter of state presumption where for a single family dock standards and criteria, roofs are allowed but cannot overhang more than one foot beyond the footprint of the lift and boat that's stored on the lift. For the side setback at the six seventeen meeting, referred to zoning district was the standard that was proposed for this standard. We have reviewed this and we are advised that it's inapplicable to the boat lift canopies since the zoning district setback applies to yards and to the extent that setbacks apply to docks, they are governed by section one thousand and one point five, which states that docks and structures over the water may not extend past the side use lines. So as such, we're proposing that that is updated accordingly and arch height and maximum projections were not changed. Some other communities that staff researched while drafting this code included Collier County and City of Cape Coral and the proposed standards that is being presented to you today seek to protect view sheds while creating standards that will provide for the installation of boat lift canopies that are proportional to the size of the boats and boat lifts. Staff recommends that the board accept public comment, adopt a proposed ordinance amendment by roll call vote, authorize the chairman to execute the ordinance amendment and direct board records to transmit the ordinance to the Department of State by electronic mail within ten days after adoption of the ordinance amendment. And I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Madam Chairman.
Yep.
If I'm advised that Commissioner Jaeger is online, so if the record could reflect that she's joined us for this item.
I did have one question. Can you go back to, Lisa, can you mute, mute up? Is that Lisa? Okay, could you tell me what were the, what were the rules here when we have a storm, impending storm?
I'll go back.
Sorry, I was doing some research on here and I didn't see what the rules are.
So boat lift canopy shall meet or exceed the requirements of awnings and canopies in the Florida Building Code. All boat lift canopies must be removed and safely stored indoors whenever the public is instructed by a governmental authority that the weather conditions require the storage of any loose items or materials due to an impending storm or other weather system.
I think we need to, we don't, we don't tell people, protect your loose items. We, I mean, I think we need to put in there a little more when we have a certain wind event, at what time, expected wind event, that they have to take them out. I don't want to leave it as loose, as loose as that, if this passes. So is it a tropical storm? Is it a heavy thunderstorm? I mean, what, what is, we need to think about what is the right criteria to make sure these don't become projectiles like they did down in Charlotte County during the hurricane?
Madam Chair.
Yep.
Is there a standard for how much wind these have to sustain to be approved by the Florida Building Code?
I know that there are some manufacturer specifications regarding that. I believe it's mostly seventy miles per hour. Do you have that information with you, Chris? We have staff from Building Construction Services here as well and Natural Resources and the county attorney's office, so I've been working along with them.
Good afternoon, Board. Chris Main, Deputy Building Official for Building Construction Services. There is a provision in Florida Building Code that does require these canvas and awning canopy type, type structures to be removed at, I believe it's sixty-five miles an hour, I'd have to look. And also any of these structures that are, the actual structures, the frames themselves, if they're built coastal, have engineered plans to be able to survive a hundred year storm.
What is a hundred year storm?
A hundred year storm event, any of those hundred year storm events.
A hundred year storm, but isn't that like a storm?
Probably a flooding standard.
Sure, it is.
But if we're talking flooding, wouldn't really be germane to a canopy. It would be a wind issue.
It would, you're right.
I mean, it's the wind that we're caring about here.
It is. What the, the code says is that a hundred year storm event, the structures located seaward of the coastal construction control line must be designed to withstand a hundred year storm event.
That's what the code says.
Okay, are there any other questions before we listen to the public and then we'll discuss it amongst ourselves? I had a, I had a question on the five, I guess I have one more, sorry. The five foot, five foot above what?
Above the boat lift.
Well, do you have a boat lift? Because I have, I have a couple boat lifts. Is that the motor? Is that the bunks? Is that the, there's all different heights of the poles?
It should be the, it should be the horizontal beam because that's what it attaches to.
Five foot above the horizontal beam?
That's.
Well, my boat would never fit in that and my, I mean.
So you gotta, you probably have a cover or, or you know, you.
I, I, I need, I need to, I need you to diagram what that means for me, somebody. What that means, because that's important, where that five foot as far as view blockage. And when you took that view of all those, you were at water level, you weren't in a house looking down a channel. Oh, the horizontal going down the side. Yeah. Okay. So that's the, the beam that holds up the motors usually on a lift.
The motors are usually attached to the front of the, the front of those beams.
Beams, yeah. Yeah, okay, I got it.
At least a lift I have on my house.
Yeah, so, so if you're looking at this one on three, it would be kind of where the three line touches that.
Where it makes that T. The dimension line.
Yeah, I spotted it. Okay, so.
Nope, it's not, I don't need, okay.
All right. Okay, so I guess we're going to hear from the public now if we have no more questions.
First person signed up is Jay Pasqua. Your address for the record, please.
Jay Pasqua, twelve eight oh one, Second Isle, Hudson, Florida. And yes, it's at the top of the aluminum beams that comes straight across.
Yeah.
There's one that goes down to left and one goes down to right and from what I'm understanding, it's at that point, it would be five feet up.
And what was your street again?
Twelve eight oh one, Second Isle.
Second, Second Isle.
That is correct, in Hudson. Yeah, you, you looked me up a few times, but anyway. Mike, I, first of all, I want to say thank you for all the time you've taken to over, to look at this issue and I am in support of it. I'd like to thank Commissioner Mariano for his support and former Commissioner Mike Wells. It is very important that we cover our property, but the reason why I'm here is, yes, to support it, but to get a little bit of clarification on one thing. On page four, item B two, or page sixteen and two A, it says, other visual obstructions are prohibited from your dock. Now, the reason why I bring that up is, is because I have a cannon and I have a six foot statue of a pirate. So it is a very big vague statement when it says prohibited on docks or obstructions are prohibited on docks. So if we could get a clarification on that and not leave that as an open item, whether that is by email or by text or by any way.
We'll clear it up here today.
I'm sorry?
We'll ask today.
That'd be great, thank you very much. In one of the replies that I got on January twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-two, when I asked about that, the reply was, interesting catch, Kristi Dolekowski. So I'm not too much concerned about it, but I am curious as to what that meant by good catch.
Well, Katie, that's probably Katie Dolekowski, which is my executive assistant.
Okay, she quoted you as saying that. So I'm kind of concerned as to what is going to be allowed. Now, if I want to put chairs out there or a table out there.
Yeah, I have tables and chairs on my dock.
I mean.
No, I think that's a, a good question to ask, that we need to clarify that.
That'd be greatly appreciated. I have not, for, I have fifty seconds left, but not for the time that I've been in Hudson that I've seen any cloth canopy or vinyl canopy become a projectile. As a matter of fact, I watch them very closely. I'm out there on a daily basis. I have not seen any that have come apart. As a matter of fact, the wooden ones that were erected in the seventies are still standing and the only concern I have with anything out there right now is the docks that have sunk into the canals that have not been removed. That is a, a safety hazard, not that that has anything to do with this. But again, thank you very much for your time and I appreciate you taking that and I do support boat canopies. Thank you for your time.
Nick Mundry. Your address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, my address is five four one five Joe Beth Drive, Newport Richie, Florida, three four six five two. And I've been following this for several years. Can I show the commissioner something?
Move to receiving file.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
The first picture you see is a picture of a boat cover, not a lift cover. It's got a frame over the, the lift that's attached to the poles. Very much similar in kind to a frame if you look at the second page of a boat lift, the lift cover. The other thing I'd like to put out, this is completely legal, because I, I took this picture to, several years ago, I took this picture to Code Compliance and Code Compliance told me it is a boat cover because it's laying on the boat. It's not a lift cover. The other thing is, this thing definitely blocks the view.
Sure does.
Of the neighbors to the left and right, opposed to the proposal that is being done through the change in the ordinance. I, I just couldn't figure for many years how this was legal and the second page was not. And I hope you consider approving the change to the ordinance.
The public is not seeing this, but it's a, it's a, it's a boat that's wrapped versus a boat with a boat cover.
Yeah, this is a boat cover because it's actually touching the boat and that's what Code Compliance told me when I took this to them. It's a boat cover and to me, it's more, it, it, it blocks the wind more and it obstructs the view more, but it still has a frame and I know there was a lot of discussion in the last meeting and in the twenty twenty-two meeting of the frames in this. I thank you.
Darrell Whitlock.
My name is Darrell Whitlock. Well, that's loud. Darrell Whitlock, I live on one three five one five Veronica Drive in the Overland Sea Ranch. The last meeting we had here, we felt compelled to actually show how many people actually wanted in our neighborhood, wanted to have the boat lift covers. So we took it on ourselves to put together a petition to get a, to get an idea. And the petition isn't, isn't really on the ordinance because the ordinance still had different things that had to be revised and changed around, but it is saying that we do want the covers and we don't believe they block views. The total count of the petitions I got for people to sign was five hundred and forty-five people actually signed it. And out of that, I had five that didn't want to sign on my end. So I do like the ordinance changes that I've been seeing, that you guys did come up with. I think there's only probably one, maybe, that might be addressed later on by actually Jeremy following behind me. But I do agree with the gentleman prior that said, out of all the years I've seen these up, I've never seen one blow off and hurt anybody's house. Even if you choose not to take them off, it's, it's just rubber, vinyl. There's more obstacles in our backyards that we, if we're going to do that, we need to start addressing grills, things that sit in the back, chairs that could blow and hit people's windows and break them. There's a lot of other obstacles in the backyard that could do a lot more damage that actually could get airborne and go through windows and hurt people. I still got a minute left, but that's about all I need to say to cover this and again, thank you on that, on your time on this ordinance.
Thank you, and you've got, you've got a cover now, I see.
Yes, ma'am, I do. I've had a cover for probably years since this, I've been following this and I think I've been in front of the commissioners, all you commissioners back, I think is nineteen, two thousand nineteen or twenty, I think it was, we were doing this. It's been years.
Madam Chair, I'll just ask a question if you don't mind. And your boat cover that you had in, on your place, did it stay in place?
Yes, and the boat, the, my boat lift cover, like I said the last time, it went through Helene, I didn't take it off, it went through Milton, I didn't take it off, didn't rip. Commissioner Mariano was over the house and he seen that it was not ripped, tethered or torn at all. And the house next to me, they ended up demoing it because it was so much damage down the house right next door to me.
Yeah, but state law requires you to take it off.
Granted, but I'm just saying is, it, it went through it and it, it handled everything with no issues.
We're lucky. In my neighborhood, it wasn't even a hurricane. We had a strong storm come through and Gulf Harbors took someone's metal porch off, metal porch roof off, damaged three roofs on my street and the homeowners couldn't get any money from the person whose porch blew off.
Act of God.
It's an act of God.
Yeah, yeah. Well, again, I, I want to thank you guys for what you do. Well, again, I want to thank you guys for what you do and working on this over these years, and hopefully, the ordinance is going to be revised to a point where it could be passed and actually help protect all of our properties. But thank you very much for your time on this.
Thank you. Okay, thanks.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I can, it's weird in my ears. So my name is Jennifer Akins. I live at 13829 John Casson Avenue, Hudson. And I'm here to support it, as I hope that all of you do. And I've been in our community for a long time. I do a lot for our community. I was a part of assisting with Darrell to get some of the signatures, and I will add to what he had said, that out of the about 110 signatures that I obtained from other people, and not all of them were on the water. Many of them have to put their boats in a public boat ramp, so they see things in a different manner than what some of us do that actually live on the water. And we only had one person that didn't want to sign the actual paperwork that we had put together. And the only reason that gentleman didn't was because he was afraid of the ramifications of it, because he does actually have a boat cover. So what I did want to say is, as for obstructions of views and stuff, where I'm seeing things, where I live, at this point, we're getting a lot of houses now that are being built that are second stories, three stories, and I can see that as blocking my view more than what I do with the actual boat covers. And I think that where we're seeing the influx of the money here, because I'm seeing that with real estate where I live, that I'm starting to see the prices of boats increased, and I'm talking like increasing from like maybe $700,000 to I'm looking at boats where I'm living right now, some of them are worth $5 million, $7 million, $3 million. So many of these people additionally want boat covers, because they're, again, looking at it on the avenue of, okay, what about the properties? As for my understanding with what I do with stuff, anything that I have, I take it in my house, anything. I don't want anything outside, because I don't want any damage to any of my other neighbors. And we would take it down anyway, as I would remove my boats, as I would remove my jet skis, and anything else that I think would damage somebody else's homes. And I'm for having some type of regulation. I don't have any problems with that, but I'm just seeing there's more positive out of this than there is for the negative. And we saw that with all the signatures, when we did actually get to the people that cannot be here because they work. I do appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
And you're at 13829 John Casson?
Yes.
And you have a boat cover?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Commissioners. Jeremy Gamble, 7309 Islander Lane, Hudson, Florida. I'm here to speak with you all about approving an ordinance to allow boat lift covers in Pasco County. I want to thank Commissioner Mariano for having a discussion with me and hearing my concerns about the ordinance that was written as recently as two weeks ago, that did have some problems that essentially would allow covers and be impossible for us to actually pull the permit and meet the requirements of said permit. There were some changes made, so thank you, staff. That was very helpful. There's still a couple items, including the height, that I think is still questionable based on the verbiage that's actually written in the ordinance compared to the actual drawing that's shown. They kind of don't match each other. Per the drawing, it's showing that the five feet above the lift does not include the arch, but the ordinance states that it does. The other problem is, I think staff is assuming that boat lifts are all 15 feet from the top of the dock, and they're not. Every single boat lift that I measure is a different height. Some of them can be three feet above the dock, some of them are 11. So we need to have a point of reference of what the actual, we need a starting point that's going to be consistent to measure what our heights can end up being, because if your lift is three feet above your dock, and I can only go five feet, now the total height of the lift is going to be, I mean, literally, eight feet above the top of the dock. It just doesn't, it doesn't make any sense. Short of that, I think everything else about the ordinance and the changes that have been made make complete sense. In reference to storms, our frames are rated for 180 miles an hour. The vinyl is recommended to be removed at 70 miles an hour. We do have staff in place to remove vinyl for customers and reinstall it after the fact. For Hurricane Helene, we took down over 500. Between Milton and Helene, we took down about another 230. All those were reinstalled after the fact, when customers, one of those reinstalled. We had zero instances where a cover was, came apart and damaged anybody's property. So that just wasn't a thing. Currently, there's, out of a minimum of 680 covers that I know of personally in Pasco County, and absolutely none of those became a flying projectile and damaged anybody's property.
Is this your company that's putting them up?
It is.
So, but, and you knew, you knew that, then none of these have, I mean, these weren't legal, but you.
They were legal. We proved it in court, actually, twice.
Oh, I'm not sure about that one.
Actually, you didn't.
Yeah, I don't think you did.
Judge Burt disagrees.
No, you need to talk to your lawyer about that.
Okay. But there was a boat that, we both know Commissioner Truex in Charlotte County, and who, where they had the pipe, not the awning material, pipe, whatever you want to call it, flew into a neighboring boat and sunk it, and the boat owner could not get any insurance money to cover the sinking of his boat.
Not surprising. Most boats aren't covered on boat lifts.
Right.
You have to have a separate rider in order for the boat to actually recover.
Neighbors, something comes from the neighbor's house, a projectile, like the roof in my neighborhood, and hits someone else's property.
Chair.
You don't get covered. Yeah, I just, he said he's not aware of any, but I'm telling.
I'm talking about Pasco, not Charlotte.
Okay, thanks.
Well, thank you.
Okay.
That's all we have, pre-signed up.
Is there anyone else here to speak to boat covers? Boat, yes. Boat lift covers, what are we calling them?
Good afternoon, Barbara Willhite, 520 Oyster Cove, Newport Ritchie. That's my personal address. I've addressed you all before regarding this issue and the impact, the visual impact that this creates. It's been all these years without having that visual impact, and this will change the way, you know, things look in my community, for myself and neighbors. You do have protections in your land development code where you're protecting the views, so this is, to change this is kind of inconsistent with that. I thought that what the planning commission came up with, which was, allow a process. There's not one size fits all. For a lot of people, this isn't a problem. And they'll easily could go through a process and get their neighbors to say, I'm fine with it. But for other people, it might be a problem. But to not have a process that allows for you to determine if it's a problem or not a problem, and just to go one size fits all and totally change what's been, you know, the condition of how a neighborhood's looked for 40 years, and just change it, and not have any process for it to be decided if it's good or bad, I think that's concerning. So, thank you for your time.
Tony, can you put that picture up that I have? I took this picture, I was looking at a house under construction, Hudson, and I was on the second floor of this house, and I looked to my left, and there were some of the boat covers that were 100% blocking the view. And I had my staff take the boat covers and extrapolate them on two other boat lifts. And there was more boat lifts that we could have covered, but this is what concerns me, and I live on the water, and I paid a lot of money for my view. And I know a lot of other people have too. And I have a boat, I have a very expensive boat. I have a seven-digit number boat. And I don't, I don't cover it. It's meant to be outside. Do you have, do you have that picture?
No, ma'am, sorry.
I have copies of it, if you could.
We're asking your staff.
Can you send this over? Commissioners, I have some.
Moving to receiving file.
So that's the boat. Those are the illegal boat lifts, canopies, whatever, on the left-hand side.
Did you call the vote?
The what?
Called the vote. We got a motion and a second.
No, we have Lisa online who wants to speak. I want to speak.
No, 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 just for this.
Oh, okay. I was saying, call the question. Okay. Was there a motion and a second? All in favor? Aye. So there's other boat lifts here. I did, I realized there's two other canopies we could have put on here, but I would tell you that this person's view of the water, that they, the water view that's part of the, you know, the value of their property, is going to be really impacted by all those boats putting covers on their lifts. And I know where Barbara lives, she's on the, you can speak in a second, where she lives on a turn, I think she has three lifts. I mean, she gonna obliterate the canal view for all her neighbors. All her neighbors, they're not going to have a water view. It's different, I think, it's why we were all fine with the lakes, and where houses are spread very far apart, it's not going to affect them. Won't have, I see no problem with that. But where you have homes, like, I can tell you, I'm sorry, the president of Gulf Harbors is out of town today, she would want to be here, so I can tell you, they are very much against this. It's gonna really impact the long views that we so enjoy when you're on the water. And I just, I just think it's a mistake that we would allow these. So I know I'm in the minority, but.
Most likely, but.
But I have to speak up for my neighbors, and my value and other people's values that are going to deteriorate. Yeah.
Yeah. I just wanted to add that I've had probably 90% of all my emails and my texts to me were for boat covers, and a very minority were not for them.
I'm sure they're the 500 people that that guy's put the boat covers up on already.
But I mean, that's, that's what I heard back from citizens.
Yeah. We have someone else that wants to speak, so I'm going to let her speak, public comment, Pastor Jen.
Hi, Pastor Jen Kerwack, 15925 Green Glen Lane, Shady Hills, Florida. I would just present that I believe that there, this should be taken into context in the same way that the people that purchase rural properties enjoy their view. They've purchased their properties. The folks on Crellin Drive, as a matter of fact, enjoyed, one individual, Daphne Sase, enjoyed her backyard very much, and she hasn't seen it unfortunately in a very long time because of the neighboring townhome community. And she had her opportunity to come and speak, and the majority just didn't fall in her favor. So I think that, to say, because I think what I'm receiving, and I don't say that this is exactly what you mean to say, but that if you live on the water, your interest and your view is more important than the folks that purchased and spent a lot of money to live in a rural area, purchasing maybe lots of acreage.
No clap, no clap.
To be able to enjoy the trees, and to be able to enjoy, and then they end up with, I don't know, something hot topic lately is like a big campground or something, you know, near their property. I don't know, that's something that's come up lately. So I just, I think that, I just want to say, the perception is, you know, on this conversation seems to a little bit skew the understanding of whether or not a waterfront with that view being more important than a rural property who says, you know, hey, I don't want that development across the street, I don't, you know, because that then blocks my view of, I watch the sunset, but now there's two-story homes and I have a ranch home, and now I can't see the sunset as much as I could prior. My neighbor also, I have a ranch home, my neighbor's a two-story home, he put a playset in his backyard. I understand the concern. Every hurricane and storm that's come through, I, you know, I bring all my stuff, like the other lady said, I bring it and tie it down, make sure it's inside, and button things up, and that play yard, that playset, two-story playset, is still next door to me, and very much so, could damage my property. And I don't think my property, it's not worth 700 or a million dollars or whatever, but that's my property, and I purchased where I did, and I have to take with it, you know, the things that come along after I've moved there. And I just don't think it seems like, you know, there should be an issue. If it's my property, the boat cover's safe, I should be allowed. The view is just what it is, and, you know, beg your neighbors not to put a boat cover, pay him, I don't know. I'm just saying. I think the rural neighbors feel the same way.
Thank you. So people may not be aware, but we have certain rules on the coastline that protect people's views. 15 feet from the edge of the seawall back, you cannot build a six-foot fence that is, what's the word?
Ready.
What?
Solid.
Solid. You can't do that on, along the coast. You have to leave 15 feet, can't be higher than what's required if you have a pool, but it has to be see-through. So it has to be metal going this way, or wire going this way, to protect people's views of the water. And so we have a different set of standards when you're along a coastline. Most counties in Florida do not allow boat covers. Most cities along the water do not allow boat covers, especially in high, in dense communities, to protect, for personal protection and view protection. You can go on Google Earth, and I've done it many times, go along the Florida coastline, go to Fort Lauderdale, go all over the place, don't allow them. So, but I think I'm on the losing end here, so I'm not going to keep beating a dead horse. Commissioner Mariano? Let's, we do want to discuss the gentleman's question about objects on the dock. Let's make sure we're not putting something in that we don't want to put in. Commissioner Mariano?
We can, we can address that first, if you want.
Now? Okay.
Okay, so I believe you are referencing.
We need.
Section 1001 for B2?
I don't know. I don't have it memorized.
I believe that's what it is. Roofs, overhead coverings, walls, enclosures, and other similar visual obstructions are prohibited on docks, lifts, piling, or other similar structures built over the water. And it says, except one, and it continues. These visual obstructions are specific to things that are built. So if you have chairs or table or so, that would not be impacted by this.
And that's kind of part of our building code. You can't put a, build something on the dock in.
Correct.
So to be clear, a non-permanent structure.
Correct. If it's not built.
So we can have pirates and cannons?
If you can move it, then yes.
There it is, on the record.
Okay, so I don't want to, did you have another question?
Just one more about the height. To me, if someone's going to build a boat lift, that boat lift's going to be X number height. From what I can see, we're allowing either, it's either five feet or three feet from the top of that pole to where the cover can go over.
Five feet.
Okay, so instead of going from the mean low, you know, from sea level, why aren't we just going from like, with the seawall height of the, the height of the dock lift, the boat lift itself?
I believe there was some discussion internally regarding that, but essentially, we settled on doing it from the mean high waterline instead. I believe there's some rationale regarding that. I don't know if Sam or Jackie would like to speak further to that.
Yeah, Chair. I think, Commissioner Mariano, I think it's important that we understand the industry standard for how this is done.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So the 15 foot above the mean high waterline.
So the fifteen foot above the mean-high waterline, that standard was already in place for docks, boat lifts, all structures over water. That's the gov, the standard that's already in the code. So when we looked at boat lift canopy piece, we just kind of adopted that same standard, but gave them some extra room because they do, they, they do extend above the top of the boat lift. And we found that many of the boat lifts in the county are already at that fifteen feet. As far, there was some discussion about the, the thought of doing boat lift canopy from the height of the seawall. But, I know internally staff advised against that because there's, you know, folks that have gotten creative with their seawalls, and the seawalls are very high.
And I can see that happening, okay.
Yep.
All right.
Would you identify yourself just for the, for the right of the county attorney's office?
Question for Sam.
Yep.
So, in our code, like, where did we come up with that standard? Just arbitrary in our code? Do we have any industry experts that said, hey, this is where you should, you shouldn't be?
I know it's consistent with what's seen around the state. I know natural resources can speak to where fifteen feet comes from, but I think it's kind of a reasonable, you know, so we don't have monstrosities on the water. Goes back to that protecting the view shed.
Commissioner, are you, your question about the fifteen feet above mean-high waterline?
Yeah, he said it's in our code, like, how that, you know, citing what's currently in there, where'd it come from? Like, was it just plucked out however long ago?
Well, it's been in the code since we've had the regulation. So it's like, probably prior to my arrival here.
So we don't really know the methodology behind that height?
Unless natural resources can speak to that. But, I do, I do know it's consistent with what we see throughout the state.
Jackie Jordan, Parks, Rec and Natural Resources Department. I would say the fifteen feet from mean-high is not really an environmental reason for it, so I don't have any additional information on why the fifteen foot was set.
Madam Chair, so last comment I want to make is just if you look at the picture that I had pulled up again. So, under the boat canopy, if, if somebody's building a dock, that dock is gonna be built for holding a boat. When it's holding the boat, when that boat's in place, it's blocking all sorts of view. The only difference is from the extension to the cover is the only difference to it. If the boat's not there, it's, it's a decent view, it's a thin, then going across. So I, I don't see.
Depends on the angle of how you're looking at it. If you're on the second floor, it's a big block.
But if the boat's there, it's, the boat's blocking.
You see right through my boat?
You can see through a boat? Well, it's good vision.
Yeah, I mean, yes, it's glass all the way around.
But if your boat's in there.
Around the boat, you can see right through it.
Your boat's on the lift.
You just don't see through the hull, but you see through all the rest.
Okay. So anyway, so for me, as far as blocking view, it's, it's not much more than what's there anyway unless someone protect the thing, so I'm good with it.
Okay, I have some questions. Can we go back to the beginning, to, to the beginning of your presentation here? Just to make sure. Okay.
The very beginning?
Canopy shall be fabric or similar material that can be rolled or folded. Okay, it says it has to, somewhere in here, it says it has to be kept in a certain condition.
I believe it's this one.
The county may order the repair of a boat lift canopy. A boat lift canopy is declared unmaintained or, and with or without notice may cause any structural safety. Okay, so if a canopy is torn, the code enforcement's gonna come out and tell, give them a fine? Or what's gonna happen? If it's torn and flapping, what are we doing?
So if it's not considered to be as presenting in a neat, clean appearance, then it could have resulting enforcement. But I am not in that department, so I can't specifically.
Where does that, where does that, what, how do we deal with this?
If it's not, if it's not a building official issue, they'd get a citation. If it's, if it's.
So it's a code enforcement issue?
If it, so if the building official determines that the canopy presents an immediate threat to public health or safety, it comes down then. If it's just ugly, the way I read this, then there could be a citation and it would go, and it would go to court.
Okay, so it has to be kept clean, not full of bird poop. So you're looking out your window and all that bird poop.
Well.
Okay, next page.
Chair, I'd like to make comment on this. Look, we, we have code, we're just piling on for things of code to do and they can't keep up on it. We can't just keep using code as a, as a Gestapo for every, every little thing. This is a, this is a freedom issue. If you want to protect your, your boat and your property that's really expensive, you should be able to do it. And, to be, to be setting more for code that they can't, and I've talked to Mike Caroll about this a hundred times, what we can enforce and what we can't enforce, what we can enforce well, what we don't enforce well. Like, we're, we're picking and choosing on code what our battles are. And this just, this just com, compounds that.
Okay, next page.
You know? So a fine, I, I don't want, I'm not for that.
All right, next, next, next page. Let's see here. Is there another page?
I already advanced it.
Oh, that's all your com, those are all your comments? Okay, so where's the one that says it has to be removed? Maybe go back, did I miss that? Direction. Canopy, safety stored indoors. Okay, all right. So we've said, we've stated it's sixty, I think sixty-five miles an hour, they gotta come off. Okay.
Madam Chairman.
Yep.
Can you go back to the, to seven, the one with the colors?
I think.
So I think, now I'm being picky, but I think you need a, you need a semicolon between green and monochromatic. Monochromatic is not a color, you're using it to describe the colors. So either you need to put monochromatic in the beginning of that sentence, or I think a semicolon probably will, will do it.
Okay.
Because I think it's monochromatic shades of beige, white, silver, light gray.
Okay. What does this mean, free of any design unless otherwise stipulated? We're gonna start selling ads on these or something? What's that mean?
Well, that's, it's prohibiting a design.
Correct.
Yeah, let's, no designs. No, we're not gonna sell ads on boat covers or anything. Right?
I think it'd be more like, put your favorite football team on your boat cover, not necessarily selling ads, like.
So this is saying like, the county attorney said, this is prohibiting that?
Okay, unless otherwise stipulated by the homeowners association or similar entity? You like that language?
That's a limitation. So unless, unless otherwise stipulated by the homeowners association that they want, they have a more restrictive covenant.
Oh, in colors or something?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
It can't override your, homeowners association can't override your restrictions, but they can be more restrictive if, i.e. they can prohibit canopies completely.
Okay, let's take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with a noted change on condition number seven by the county attorney.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
It's a roll call.
Roll call, okay.
Does Commissioner Yeager have any comments?
Yeah.
Oh, she can comment, Lisa, we're voting, but you will, can you make a comment?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
I approve.
Okay, it's gonna be a roll call, so hang on one second.
Okay.
District Board and Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two, Commissioner Wakeman.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District Five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District Three, Chairman Starkey.
Nay. All right, thank you very much. Thank you. Lisa, no clapping, thank you. We're sorry you can't be with us and we, we have you and your family in our thoughts.
Thank you.
Okay, what are, where are we now?
P fifty-six. P fifty-six, we have proof of publication in the June fourth, twenty twenty-five edition of the Tampa Bay Times, supplemented by an affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
All right, I was gonna give everybody a minute to kind of leave.
Yeah, no talking in here, guys, please. We've got more work to do.
All right, good afternoon. Amy Toll with Planning Development and Economic Growth. Item P fifty-six is the adoption hearing for the River Ridge CPA. I will read the ordinance into record. It is a very long ordinance, so bear with me. An ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, map two dash fifteen and sheet eleven, from res three residential three dwelling units per gross acre, excuse me, to PD on approximately ten point four two acres of real property located on the south side of Ridge Road, approximately one thousand one hundred and eighty-five feet west of the intersection of Ridge Road and Moon Lake Road. Res six residential six dwelling units per gross acre to PD plan development on approximately thirteen point oh three acres of real property located on the south side of Ridge Road, approximately one thousand one hundred and eighty-seven feet west of the intersection of Ridge Road and Moon Lake Road. And res nine residential nine dwelling units per gross acre to PD plan development on approximate, on approximately nine point eight six acres of real property located on the east side of Moon Lake Road, approximately one thousand four hundred and fifty-five feet north of the intersection of Ridge Road and Moon Lake Road. In a text amendment creating subarea policy flu seven point one point eight four River Ridge PD and a map amendment to the future land use map two dash nine, adding subarea map two dash nine eighty-four River Ridge PD, providing for additional text amendments as necessary for internal consistency, and providing for a repealer severability and effective date. This comes with a recommendation of approval.
Do we want a presentation?
Yes.
Okay, presentation.
So if a presentation is requested, I just want to put this out here. P sixty is the companion MPUD rezoning as well for this item.
Okay, why don't we pull them both up?
They're actually not companions.
Yeah, I would.
Okay, never mind.
I'll take the comp plan amendment.
Please disregard.
Okay, all right, we'll, we'll take a presentation on this one.
Got it. Okay, so this is a proposed small-scale comprehensive plan amendment. The item is requesting an amendment, or the application is requesting an amendment from res three, res six, and res nine to PD. The intent of this PD is to actually reinstate the previously approved entitlements from the River Ridge DRI and request an increase of sixty thousand, sixty thousand seven hundred and fifteen square feet on what's being called parcel K three. This is located on the south side of Ridge Road, approximately one thousand one hundred and eighty-five feet, which is K three, one thousand one hundred and eighty-seven feet, which is I two, and one thousand four hundred and fifty-five feet, which is P two. So for proximity, this item is three parcels of the overall River Ridge MP, or overall River Ridge existing, overall River Ridge MPUD. The intent of this PD is to just ensure that the entitlements that were recently rescinded from the DRI back in twenty twenty-four are made whole with the River Ridge MPUD existing entitlements and consistent with that zoning district. Because this is going PD, there is a companion subarea policy. Policy flu seven point one point eight four River Ridge PD. And there is a companion substantial modification in the name of River Ridge MPUD. So the location is in the central market area, as you can see, as identified by the red star. Subject site on the context map, so here are the three parcels that are currently requesting an amendment to PD. On the far west is subject site, parcel I two. Parcel K three is in the center, and parcel P two is going to be on your far east. Here's an aerial view of some of the uses and the densities that fall within the area. So as you can see, there's existing commercial at the low key, at the intersection of Moon Lake Road and Ridge Road. You can see that this does fall within the River Ridge MPUD as, as identified by the blue labels. There's the airport in proximity to the area. And surrounding the commercial is medium-density residential and a higher-density residential project or product. Here's the existing future land use, as you see, the res three, res six, and res nine. And the request to amend to PD is the visual for this, for this slide. This is the companion subarea policy. So what this is doing is just reinstating the entitlements that align with the proposed MPUD zoning district. So as you can see, I'll start with K three. K three is proposing a total of a hundred and twenty thousand square feet. This is where the increase of sixty thousand, approximately sixty thousand square feet, is being placed. It's currently approved for around sixty-four thousand square feet. Parcel I two is, was currently approved for thirteen thousand five hundred and ninety square feet. There's no change there. And parcel P two is currently approved, or through the MPUD, currently approved for seven thousand five hundred square feet of retail commercial office and two hundred and twenty-five multifamily residential units. There's no change there. Transportation map, it's on Ridge Road and Moon Lake Road. There is an existing eight-foot multi-use path, a twelve-foot multi-use path, and additional eight-foot multi-use path in proximity to the subject sites. And the proposed amendment is consistent with the following comprehensive plan policies. Section flu A six for the PD plan development establishment. Policy flu eight point one point three central market area establishment. Policy flu one point six point one commercial development. Policy flu one point eight point seven economic development. And policy flu one point eight point ten preservation of capacity of employment generating uses. The reason why there's only three parcels of the overall MPUD is that the already-approved entitlements that are within the MPUD, the density intensity that's set forth there, is already deemed consistent with the comprehensive plan at this time. So the only change necessary to ensure consistency with those entitlements are these three sites, or three parcels. So with that, we recommend approval of the proposed comprehensive plan amendment and adopt the ordinance by roll call vote. We'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Does anyone have any questions? I see the applicants coming up. Okay, come on up, Ms. Barbara.
Good afternoon again, Barbara Willhite.
How did all this already?
Eighty-six, twenty-seven, Grand Boulevard, for the applicants. This is an unusual situation where this DRI was rescinded pre-me without making sure that it didn't create any conflicts with the comprehensive plan for property owners that had nothing to do with the rescission. So this is a paperwork cleanup.
Yeah.
That we've spent a lot of time with, the county attorney's office and staff, trying to get this paperwork cleaned up, so to not impact these folks. So, P two, MPUD parcel P two, their MPUD entitlements are seventy-five hundred square feet of retail and two hundred and twenty-five multifamily. That, that is their MPUD entitlements. We're just trying to make the comp plan consistent because of the rescission, the DR rescission didn't, created a conflict with the comp plan because the MPUD preceded your comp plan in nineteen ninety. Really weird facts. So that's the situation for P two and I two. What's proposed as PD is exactly what the MPUD approves for. K three, there is a request to increase the commercial that was approved for that parcel. Currently, that parcel is approved for sixty-four thousand two hundred and eighty-five square feet of commercial. And there is a request to increase that to by sixty thousand seven fifteen for a total of one twenty-five. That's just to make that parcel more developable. It's been sitting for a long time. This prop, this project, the River Ridge DRI, now MPUD, has, is nearing build-out. And so we're just doing those tweaks to try to move this project along and get these vacant parcels developed. So that is the reason for, and we had to go parcel, parcel by parcel and determine if the rescission created a conflict or not. Took a lot of work. These were the three that we had to, to clean up the paperwork on. Hope that makes some sense and gives you some background as to why this is coming forward like this. I'm available to talk about it more, but I don't want to bore you either.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I'm waiting for Commissioner Wakeman to ask about a little local.
I did ask David Allen, where is he?
That is a good MPUD question. So save that one. It's a good MPUD question. And the answer is, we did take care of that.
That was yesterday.
I had faith in you.
So, okay. I'm sorry, I'm confused because I didn't know we were approving apartments today. Oh, is this the, is this the low-income? What is this?
So the, so, MPUD already approved apartments here, rescissioned the DRI, made a conflict with the comp plan. So you're not actually approving new apartments. So you're not actually approving new apartments. But I can tell you that the contract purchaser for that apartment site is Dominion, and they are looking forward to doing another affordable project with you. And Katessa Archer is here from Dominion and looking forward to doing that. But to answer your question, that parcel will be, not allowed to be, have live local by condition. So that's an advancement to this MPUD, something the MPUD doesn't have right now and could be argued about by others. But we're making a significant step forward in two things. One is by putting a condition on this MPUD, as when we talk about the MPUD, to not allow live local on this parcel and to also bring forward a affordable project.
And for the other two commercial parcels?
The live local condition was approved by your county attorney over here to my right, and it applies to the whole project.
Well, to be clear, it applies to all the vacant parcels that Barbara's clients control. There may be some parcels that her clients don't control that that condition does not apply to. But everything that is being changed today or reinstated today, that live local condition applies to.
Okay, so we'll take public comment on this, if anyone wants to speak to this.
We have no one signed up in advance, either online or.
From the audience, hand up.
You are welcome to speak if you want to speak on this, if you have not signed up. And there's no one online?
No one online.
Is there anyone else after this gentleman that wishes to speak to this item? Okay.
My name is Robert Solfeo, seven nine one three Leighton Circle. You were speaking about the Ridge Road and River Ridge Boulevard. What is, I guess, I two project that's going to be done? I was wondering if we, first of all, homeowners are asking if we know what's going to be built on that corner? I think you said it was like thirteen thousand, five, thirteen thousand feet or something, a project? We just spoke about it a minute ago.
I, I don't know if we, we don't, we don't know what's coming. I don't think we know what's coming, but that's.
Okay.
I mean, I don't.
It's decreasing commercial entitlements on parcel I two.
It's decreasing?
That's what.
Okay.
Comprehensive plan amendment, or, I'm sorry, that's what the MPUD says. Right now, we're on the comprehensive plan amendment.
Yeah, but we're on the comp plan now, so maybe you want to wait.
And it's, it's changing the future land use to PD as, as is Tull and as Willhite explained. The actual, what's going there is the rezoning, which is number sixty, which they'll get to after they close this one out.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. That'd be a later date, I assume?
No, in just a few minutes.
Oh, okay. Second thing I'd like to.
Don't go all the way in the back, just stay right up.
Second thing I'd like to address, if it's possible, we have spoken about a lot of trees being taken down, oak trees. While we're talking about River Ridge Boulevard, this is where we live on, we live on Deerwood, which is right there, River Ridge Boulevard and Deerwood Avenue. The church right there on River Ridge Boulevard cleared out a piece of land that was huge. They took down probably a couple hundred trees. This was over a year ago. They leveled the land, it's all grass now, not one tree was ever replaced. Why?
This is not general public comment. This is, these are public hearings on these.
Well, I mean, we were talking about trees and how many trees have been taken down. I mean, how we saving trees, and I'm just addressing why trees were taken down on a piece of property from a church.
But we're, we're talking about land use.
You're out of order, basically.
Well, I don't know nothing about order, man. This is the first meeting I've been to.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So, the way we do public comments, supposed to be you have a conversation, you got three minutes to talk.
Yeah.
We're not supposed to be in an interaction dialogue. That's what gets this whole thing confused.
So your comments are for the next item, so if you don't mind, we'll, you can come up at the, at a future item. Okay, is there anyone else that wants to speak to this item, which is the cleanup of this MPUD?
So no one, would no one align with approval?
Nope, there's nobody online. Okay, I'll take a second.
Second.
On favor?
No, it's a.
I'm sorry.
Roll call anyway, yeah.
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Yeager.
She's offline.
No, no longer online. District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District three, Chairman Starkey.
Aye. Okay, so now we'll move on. I think we did, okay, P fifty-eight.
Or P fifty-seven.
P fifty-seven.
Well, you want to stay with River Ridge?
Yeah, go ahead.
P sixty and.
Yes, let's go ahead and get that one done.
Get it done?
Yep.
Okay, so then for P sixty, we have proof of publication in the June eighth, twenty twenty-five edition of the Tampa Bay Times supplemented by an affidavit certified mailing since site posted.
Good afternoon, Amy Tull with Planning Development and Economic Growth. Item P sixty is a substantial modification to the River Ridge MPUD Master Plan Unit Development in the name of River Ridge Homes, Inc. It is a rezoning request from MPUD Master Plan Unit Development to MPUD Master Plan Unit Development to allow for the reinstatement of entitlements from the River Ridge DRI to the River Ridge MPUD, increasing commercial entitlements on parcel K three, increasing residential entitlements on parcel J and L, decreasing commercial entitlements on parcel I two, increasing the height limit on parcel P two, and associated revisions to the conditions of approval on approximately one thousand three hundred and eighty-eight point two acres located in West Central Pasco County. This comes with a recommendation of approval with conditions, and staff is here with a presentation for that as well. Okay?
Good afternoon, William for Million Planning Development Economic Growth. I'll try not to belabor some of the stuff that's already been covered. County map, location, like Ms. Tull just said, this is for the cleanup of the former River Ridge DRI to codify and to move those entitlements and some of those changes now into the River Ridge MPUD. This increases the commercial entitlements on parcel K three by sixty thousand square feet to a total of one hundred and twenty-five thousand. It increases the residential entitlements on parcel JL by four dwelling units, by one townhome block, from two fifty-six to two sixty total. It decreases the commercial entitlements on parcel I two to the county attorney's point, when the gentleman last spoke, by two hundred and ten square feet. And for the clarity of that gentleman, the use is allowed there only C one, so it's a very low intensity neighborhood scale commercial that's going to occur on parcel I two. And it does increase the height limit on parcel P two from forty-five feet in height to fifty. That was in the previous paperwork of the MPUD throughout the years, that height increase, and we're simply moving that height increase over to this MPUD. The overall location map and the zoning map. The future land use map reflecting the future land use that reverted after the DRI rescission back to its original residential flues. The context map showing the, you have the Pasco Hernando College there, the elementary school, as well as the high school and the middle school for River Ridge. This is the MPUD master plan to give an overall layout about the parcels that are subject to this modification here today. You can see P two all the way to the north along Moon Lake Road. And then as you get towards the intersection, you can see K three and I two as you move further west. There's one variation analysis for this MPUD from eight oh five six. Restrictions on post-development wetlands and upland buffers. This is one we see a lot, this has to do with ownership of common areas for those, for those non-residential uses to maintain their own common areas here. And to answer Commissioner Waitman's question, condition forty-six of this MPUD, we do address live local on the subject parcels.
There's no question.
No question. To answer your statement, Commissioner, that is included. This, this comes to you with a recommendation of approval from both PDE and the planning commission.
Okay, do we have any questions for the, for William?
No, I think, well, for the customer in the back.
Yeah.
I think, maybe not Mike, but somebody talked to him, explain to him the commercial uses, like what's in the C one, that way when we approve the zoning, that the customers have a general idea of what it, what it means to them since it's their first time here.
Absolutely, I can certainly do that.
And I don't, are you going to speak, David? Are you going back to?
Go ahead, the gentleman.
All right, do we want the applicant to make a presentation? Are we good?
Barbara Willhite, I was just going to answer the question, do we know what's going on with I two? No, just a paperwork cleanup, so I didn't want that to go unanswered, but.
I figured that.
Thank you.
Do you want to check and see if he wants to make a comment or?
If that gentleman wanted to comment, he can now. This is, this was the issue that you were bringing up, but they're going to explain to you, we down, we down.
Down.
We downzoned it, and there's restrictions on it for neighborhood commercial, and they'll explain what that is, which is the right thing for that community.
I appreciate it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. I had a first time coming here, too.
Thank you. You might want to look at all the trees that church took down.
Yeah, I'm going to talk to you about that, don't go too far. Okay, is there anyone online who wishes to speak?
We have no one online or no one signed up.
Okay, then I'll take a motion.
So no one to sign up or speak with approval?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next.
Back to P fifty-seven. We have proof of publication to the hearing of this matter at this time in the Tampa Bay Times of August sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, this is Tracy Overturf, Public Infrastructure, Fiscal and Business Administration interim director. Item P fifty-seven is a resolution revising the water, wastewater, and reclaimed water rates, fees, and charges. Recommended action is to accept public comment and receive the presentation of the twenty twenty-five rate study and the rate resolution outlining the adjustment to rates, fees, and charges for utility services for FY twenty twenty-six through twenty twenty-nine. The team has been working with a consultant, Stan Tech Consulting, and we have Justin Grant here this afternoon to present the finding and recommendations. We also have the utilities team available if there are any questions.
Well, welcome back.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, how you doing? It's interesting to be wearing a different jersey today, but I'm pleased to come and talk to you and continue the discussion and represent the county here with.
We still put you at the end of the agenda.
Yes, I appreciate that. Yeah, I was, I was thinking about the different jokes or, you know, introductions we could make, and, you know, certainly this is not a development item, but, you know, I've been a part of many of these sessions, and there's lots of important business for the county to conduct, and this is part of that, so we're happy to do it. So this is a four-year rate study, and so we're happy to be a part of that process as well. So there's two public hearings that'll happen, and so we'll go into our presentation. Let me see if I can get our clicker functioning here real quick. All right. All right, there we go. Okay, perfect. So this is something this board is pretty familiar with, right? And so I'll go over kind of the four main objectives, objectives or pillars, why we go through when we do this study. And so first thing is we want to look at revenue requirements. You've heard a little bit of commentary. I know that Public Works talked a little bit about revenue sufficiency analyses and things like that that are, that are happening as a part of, this is part of this process as well. And so we try and figure out the how much, right? There's operating costs, there's capital costs, there's financial policies that need to be adhered to. And so you want to make sure you take this opportunity on a four-year basis and really take a hard look at that. Then we look at cost allocation. Cost allocation breaks it apart, your different customer classes. So you're trying to provide main, you know, set of services between water, wastewater, and reclaim, and that distributes between residential customers, commercial customers, industrial and the like. Then you look at rate design. And so this is the opportunity that you don't do that on an annual basis, do that every four years when you, when you take a look at your things. And you, you look at the how, how are rates structured, block tiers, things like that. And then you look and you take the opportunity to update other fees and charges. So the name of the game here for the utility is it's a municipal, you know, government utility, which is cost recovery. And so you take this opportunity to go through the exercise and examine all the different things that the utility has to perform when they roll trucks to do specialized services and make sure that the appropriate fees are being charged, that the utility is made whole as a result of those activities. So let's take a look at the timeline. So the timeline here, we've been working here for quite a long time, as Tracy introduced the item, you know, with utility to get through this. And so now we're here kind of on the home stretch for adoption. And so we've got two public hearings, first one being here today on the nineteenth, the second one being at the Date City Meeting on nine three. If the board ultimately chooses to adopt the rate plan that the utility is proposing, that'll happen at that second public hearing in the green item, and then on ten one, it'll become effective. And so then, because of certain requirements, there's a delay, you know, there's a notice requirement for bulk users, so those bulk rates that'll go into effect, that'll be in December, excuse me, on December first. So let's talk a little bit about here what the main, some of the main drivers. So we're not going to talk too much about the entire capital plan, but we will highlight two main projects that the utility is working hard to try and make sure that is implemented here as a part of this rate study. Both of them are expansion, both of them are wastewater plants. As you can see here on the screen, right, where we've got Land O' Lakes and Wesley Center wastewater, wastewater treatment plants, you've got four hundred and three million worth of wastewater plants that are trying to go into the plan. And so why this is an important slide is you see a number of different MGD requirements and things that are coming through, is you'll see, you know, when we talk about the rate plan in a few slides, FY twenty-seven is when the utility is planning to go out and finance these activities, and so you'll see that as a major cost pressure coming into that. All right, so let's take a minute here to walk through kind of these historical rate increases and what Pasco County looks like relative to, you know, the US Water and Sewer CPI. And so I'll mention that is the Water and Sewer CPI, so not to be confused with things that include electric utilities. And so this is just for the, the standard water and sewer, does not include reclaim. And so you look here over, over this period of time, that Pasco County, over the last ten years in twenty fifteen, has had a twenty-seven percent increase as compared to fifty-six percent, you know, on the water sewer CPI from a national basis. That's a twenty-nine percent, almost thirty percent delta, that Pasco County maintains a more affordable position. You see a couple of fluctuations there in the chart. In twenty eighteen, the county did make some rate structure modifications that lowered those first tiers, made some, you know, lower consumption users, bills more affordable. But most notably in twenty twenty and in twenty twenty-one, I'm sorry, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-two, those are the first, first two utility acquisitions that the, of the FGUA systems, being Aqua and Lindrick in twenty twenty-two. And you see a rate impact there in twenty with Aqua being taken on because the utility ultimately, you know, elected to do a rate increase across its entire rate base. And then twenty twenty-two, the county was able to avoid a rate increase by utilizing some federal monies that came upon, came about as a result of the pandemic. All right, so let's go to the residential bill comparison here on the left. So let's first take stock of where the county sits relative to, to its peers in a water and sewer bill. And so this is on a six thousand gallon basis, and so that, you know, it's still your average use for your average customer. You can see Pasco County there, eighty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents, kind of that, you know, if we call it the top of the bottom third, if you will, almost towards the bottom of the, the middle half of the graph. And the good news here is when you take a look at your rate increases that are proposed there on the right side, and so I know that's a little bit small and kind of hard to see, but we want to make sure we get a lot of impactful information on this slide. You've got a four-year plan that suggests a water and sewer, an even water and sewer increase of three seven five in twenty twenty-six, and then a four seven five increase for the remaining three years of that plan. And so you see there that it is compared to some of the other regional utilities, most notably there Hillsborough County at the top, that's approved a multi-year structure at five percent. You see Newport Ritchie, that is a municipality here within the county, at four percent, and a couple others that are significantly higher. You look down at Saint, City of Saint Petersburg, that has some higher increases there. And so from a, you know, rate design standpoint, and an increase, right, Pasco continues to align with that slide we looked at, a slide ago, that, you know, it's affordability, affordability side, a slide that is more of a steady and a steady approach here. All right, so now let's move into a little bit more of that rate design thing. And so what we ultimately worked with, with the utility is to take a look at the reclaimed water structure, is one of the main design elements we'll talk about here for a minute. As you see there on the left, right, the current fees, but I'll spend some time here, you know, talking about the bulk side first, and then the next slide will address some of the retail changes that we're suggesting. And so you see the four bars there in each one of them. Pasco County is a little bit unique, that they have two different bulk structures for the reclaimed users, one with storage and one without storage. And so when you look at that top one, that those are things like, most notably, golf courses and things like that, that have the ability to store reclaimed water, they can pump, they can transmit in certain ways. And so there's a rate discount for that, right? I don't want to say discount, there's a different rate structure for that. And so right now, you see in the, in the different bars, right, if you can read the legend there, the black bar is the existing fees. And so the orange bar is an indexed approach that would index right along with that slide that we were just on, at three seven five, they're going in twenty-six. And then the next three bars, gray, yellow, and blue, are different indexes of cost recovery pieces, right? And so if they ultimately look at both bulk and retail side, when you look at the cost of service allocation for reclaim, it's subsidized by the sewer fees to a certain extent. And so when we worked with the utility, this is an opportunity for the utility to make some adjustments to those rates to increase its cost recovery. And so the gray bar is a twenty-five percent increase in cost recovery, yellow bar is a fifty percent, and blue is that full cost. And so you look there at the top rate, dollar eleven is the reclaim without storage, that's the full cost recovery for that structure, dollar six. full cost recovery for that structure, $1.67 at the bottom. The recommendation there, highlighted in the red box, is to increase the 25%. Okay, so now let's move to the retail side. So the retail side, you've got a couple of things here. Under the current structure here, we'll highlight that, that purple box first, the purple box being, the current structure allows for 10,000 gallons included in the base charge that is charged to residential customers, and so in an effort to try and, you know, alleviate certain system demands and promote more conservation, conservation signal a little bit earlier in the rate structure, the recommendation here is to, is to move that tier down from 10K to 8,000 gallons. And so this could increase system product availability as a result. As we look at your average use, usage habits, right, we ran some additional analysis at 10,000 gallons, and that, you know, over two-thirds of your standard lots are using less than that for their irrigation. So then that also introduces two volumetric tiers where there was only one, and you'll notice here in the second tier, both are separated by 5,000 gallons, the second tier at 13,000 gallons in excess does achieve cost recovery on the retail side. And so the aim there is to ultimately create a structure that when you have higher than normal usage, you know, for these normal residential properties, that the utility is able to recover its costs past those thresholds. And so ultimately, you look down there in the gray, and you see some of those bill impacts with the 10K gallon user, this is ultimately going to represent about a $3 increase from 1220 to 1520. And you do achieve some additional cost recovery with the utility. Here's a slide, I know it's all purple, purple is the color of reclaimed pipes, so our apologies for some of that blending a little bit, and so we've got kind of that orange slide, and then there's a darker purple there, that's the 8K gallon proposed. I wish I had a little laser here to get to that, but right there in the heart of the slide, that the point of this slide being is it represents some of the same data that we just talked about, gives you, gives you some comparisons to those regional utilities. But when you're making the change here, even though you're making a structural change, you're reducing from 10K to the 8K, this is consumption at 10,000 gallons, so now the change is here, you're going to have an 8K included, and you're going to have 2, 2,000 gallons worth of consumption on that user. Pasco County's position doesn't change relative to the other utilities. All right, and so finally, our summary recommendations here, I'll run through these, and then we can go through any questions that you might have. So the four-year plan here is the indexing at 3.75 and 26, and then we talked about, you know, those big impacts from the wastewater plants coming in in '27, and the financing and the additional debt that comes online with that, that precipitates that 4.75 for the remaining three years. From a retail rate standpoint, right, we've got no structural changes on the water and sewer side, and we just walked through some of those things for reclaim on both the bulk side and, the bulk side and the retail side. Finally, connection fees at this time would link along with the indexing plan at 3.75 and 4.75. Bulk rates have been calculated as a part of the study for water and sewer to index, they will, they will increase to cost of service as part of the, the analysis, and then they'll index along in '27 through '29, and then reclaim has been presented on that previous slide. And as we talked about in the beginning, those miscellaneous fees, as well as the environmental lab charges, will be updated as a part of the resolution documents that'll come forward to you on 9/3 for adoption. That concludes our presentation.
That was a fast one, but I have a couple of questions, I'll let my board members go first. Mr. Oakley?
Yeah, I, not any questions, just, I admire the way we've been doing this because we have small increments of increases, where if you look at other counties and surrounding counties of Pasco, they have large increases because they don't do it the same way.
They kick the can.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's done the right way, I believe, and a, a little note from Tampa Bay Water yesterday, we were talking about reclaimed water a little bit, and the fact that in reclaimed water, we have a lot of reclaimed water, even though it takes four houses to develop enough to water one yard. One of our main issues is distribution lines to get it to the right place to be used by our customers, so that's something we need to look into in the future so we can take care of that and, and spread that water out so everybody can use that water, so. A different look at it than I had before, and just a little note again, I left out of my part about reporting on Tampa Bay Water, and Jack missed it yesterday, but the fact of it is that we've started using the 90% of high water marks in the last few rains, few weeks, whatever, and a month, we've had more rains, we're sitting at a little over 10 billion gallons in our reservoir, which is a good place to be coming into the fall when we usually have our drought time and things of that nature. So we're looking good with, with the water uses, and we're, we're picking up that 90% of the Alafia River to be able to pump into the reservoir. It's really worked out good because you, you can put 200 million gallons a day into the reservoir, and it, in fact, we use about 200 million gallons throughout our whole system, so it really works good.
Maybe next, next meeting, give us an update on the, what's happening in South, Southern Hillsborough County with their, their plant, I'm wondering how they're coming along with that.
Oh, okay.
Water treatment plant, okay.
I'll bring that to the next meeting, I'll, I'll get that info, yeah. A good project.
You have questions?
I'd just make a comment. I had talked with the golf courses because they got hit the, probably how it's with the rates, and the, the way they're set up, they did a lot of, do a lot of storage, I was with stormwater. So I went down to Seven Springs to talk to them, they actually invited me down to talk about another issue which we're working on with water quality, especially with the Influt River running through it. So they cut down a lot of their water, and part of the reason they do, do cut down whatever they can is because the more reclaimed water used, the more chemicals you have to put in to offset it. So I think we should try to.
That's interesting.
Yeah, it's just trying to offset it, they'd much rather have rainwater or regular water. So I'd like to be looking at them, and I've talked with the team about it for the future, trying to work with Swift Mud and the golf courses to find out, can we allow them a little more pumping? And I will tell you, Heritage Pines is the one area I'm a little concerned with because of the sinkhole activity was up there from years ago, so water level's going to be maintained, but I think if we can look at it, it may be better to get less chemicals in the water, you know, for water quality for down the road, and then maybe free up some of them. Now, they, they really cut down and saved themselves a bunch of money, but I don't know how the others are doing.
Okay, so my questions, I have two, and I brought them up in our meeting.
Sure.
So first, we promised our citizens that we were going to help them with their water rates if they were with FGUA by purchasing all four of the private water providers.
Sure.
That were under FGUA, because I think we have some that are, are not under FGUA, they're much smaller. So we bought Lyndrick, we bought, what was the first one?
Aqua.
Aqua.
Aqua. Where are we with the next one, which is not Aloha?
Sure.
I guess it's Mad Hatter.
Sure, so, so, yeah, I've got two slides that.
And Commissioner Waitman definitely wasn't here when we did that, and I don't know if Commissioner Oakley was, so I'm not sure they, they know the history.
Sure, sure, no, I, I certainly remember it well, and I had the, you know, fortunate opportunity to be a part of both of those acquisitions. So back in 2020, you know, if you go back to, you know, ultimately this slide, right, when we kind of looked at that affordability back in 2020, right, that was the first acquisition, the first of, as you stated, Commissioner, four different systems that are located within Pasco County's borders that are operated by the Florida Government Utility Authority, also known as FGUA. And so ultimately, 2020, we took over that first one there with Pasco Aqua, and then two years later, did Lyndrick. And so at that time, Pasco had also done some studies to take a look at the remaining systems, which is consolidated, and it does get confusing, the final remaining system is called Pasco Systems, it's not Pasco County, it's Pasco Systems as, as named through FGUA. And so I think what's helpful is I do have a backup slide here, this is the first one. And so in order of acquisition, as the utility planned years ago, FY 26 was the targeted year for that, right? And so they're taking a look at that, I know they've mentioned it many times in the work sessions that we've had as a part of this process, is getting ready for the consolidated utility system. This snapshot here will give you an idea, I know a lot of you are looking at specific service area and different names and things like that, that's directly from the FGUA's ACFIR that is represented there. And so that's, that's slated for FY 26, and then in FY 29 would be the second system, this is the Pasco System. So same, same description here that goes through and defines the service area, you know, and ultimately, right, you've got a number of different, you know, sets that go within that, but the utility is planning for that. What I will note here, as a part of the rate adoption process, is, is that the, the board will ultimately be considering a resolution on 9/3 for a rate resolution that would be four years, it would be independent of these actions, and so these actions do require separate diligence processes that the county did go through back in 2020 and 2022, as defined in state statutes, don't quote me, I believe it's Chapter 110, I defer to the county attorney before I mention those specific things, but there is a separate diligence process, and as, as a part of that diligence process, if it's ultimately found in the public interest and at the board, the board can adopt a rate offsetting measure, or whatever the financing, you know, requirements that are necessary at that time to take those utilities on, they do that separate and identified with that measure on its own, not as a part of this four-year structure.
Senator?
Yes.
So way back when, back in like 2004, we had all these water companies that had trouble, the FGUA was settled on to be a, a vehicle to take them over. Aloha was a big part of it, Lyndrick was a big part of it, Aqua was a big part of it, and I'll, I'll tell you, up in Hudson, especially Nye, Florida, another big part of it. So I know the others were factored in as well, but I, I don't know if the order was done the way.
That was by size, just to affect the rate payers less.
Okay, so as far as to affect rate payers less, I will tell you, the Hudson area would be the easiest one to take over in that case, because when your rates of Nye, Florida are through the roof already, and Hudson Water Works are really low, if you want to consolidate that system, it'd probably be very little.
Wait, Hudson Water Works was not one of the four.
They're not, or they're not.
They're not, yeah, they were cooperative, but, but, but the, it may be a deal that could be put together to keep all the rates the same and bring them all in the same system, because right now, the, the service they're getting with Nye, it's not Nye now, it's a different company, but it's just been terrible.
Most of these, that's how it is.
Exactly.
They don't put any money into quality improvements.
So what, without affecting rate payers, the least expensive one for anybody would be actually taking, looking at the Hudson system. And I know Mike's had some conversations, but I think it's still another push to have for us to keep it going. But again, even, even with Aloha being bigger, I still think as they were one of the initial ones, maybe it's something we should really look at to find out, do we take that one first?
Aloha?
Yeah.
Well, I, so our thought, our thought process, guys, when we set this up, was that.
I was here.
Excuse me?
I got here in '16, so.
Okay, so you were here, okay. So, so then you know that the more people who are paying in as the county grows, the less impact it has per capita.
Yeah.
And that, that was our thinking. I hear complaints about them all the time, and I, that's why I wanted to bring it up, to not let us forget, to make sure we're on a path. So are you saying that we said we were going to do Mad Hatter in '26, and are we on path to take, take Mad Hatter, or?
I'll defer to the utility to speak towards it, their progress. I can tell you, we've looked at some of these things in supporting, and so I'll.
Joseph.
Step aside for Joseph.
It sounds to me like you were saying we had to separate.
Yes, so Joseph Amor, Utilities Director. So actually, we had a task order with Stan Tech to conduct some initial financial evaluation for those systems, and they're supposed to prepare a schedule for us in terms of the timeline for acquiring those systems. So that report is due.
So, so the utility, the utility originally had set out, and I know there was communication, you know, with certain, with county administration, that they were trying to get these things done within this next four-year block, right? And so I want to try and clarify some of the states and statements that I made here, is that '26 and '29 is what the utility has tried to articulate to the board, I know there's been some memorandums that have gone back and forth, we've been furnished with, with those copies, I know it's interesting, I wrote one of them. But, you know, in that, in that time, right, is targeting that FY 26 to take over the first system consolidated, you're right, Commissioner, right, that that is the smaller of the two systems, and there's large amounts of outstanding debt, and so the idea there with the Pasco system being the second one that's on the screen here, is, you know, the county also has representation on the FGUA board, and so you do get a right, you have input, right, into that process, right, when they go and they finance and they take additional debt. And so the idea here is you'll have an opportunity to be a part of those discussions if the FGUA ever were to try and take additional debt through this period of time, but when you go through this, you allow, you know, you allow, you take over the smaller one, consolidate it in FY 26, and then in '29, the benefits of doing that is just like you were talking, Commissioner, right, is that the rate payers and the FGUA will pay down through some of that debt, and so as the structure goes, there's an interlocal agreement between the county and FGUA that allows for the purchase price of these utilities to be equal to the outstanding debt on it, and so what that does.
Yeah, and we want them to not incur any more debt.
Right.
Because their fixes may not be what, you know, their, my experience is they do Band-Aids, and we come in and we fix it.
Right.
So we won't be paying for Band-Aids.
Right, and, and Joseph's right, we, we've taken a look at that, and we're getting ready to finalize some studies here to give, to give back to the utility to take a look at those, those two systems. Those are financial in nature, and so the biggest thing that is the variable for both of those systems is evaluation of the capital improvement plans for both of those utilities. And so the two biggest variables, you look at the cost with this, is ultimately what the county, you know, the county standard would be and what the recommended CIP would be, and I know there's going to be additional conversations with the county staff to have their engineers take a look and say, hey, is the CIP adequate based on what the FGUA is doing, or would it be higher? I know there was different amounts that were suggested when we took over Aqua and Lyndrick, and so they were revised, and so that kind of changes the cost investment, and then the other is what we just mentioned, right, is how much debt is on the system, and if there's any fluctuation in that debt, right, positive or negative, before the county ultimately has to take it over.
Senator?
Yeah, and then I have another thing.
There's another numeric factor to consider.
I'm talking to Tony.
Okay.
Pull up Trinity while he's talking.
We have the, we have the Senate Appropriations Chair, live in, I think, in the Aloha District.
Yeah.
If ever there's a time to get attention for someone to bring in a good chunk of money, which helped us tremendously with Lyndrick, I think Aqua as well, I think that's a factor to find out, what does he feel comfortable looking for, because if he can come up with a big chunk of money, you can make the whole thing work.
You know, I've talked to commissioners when I'm at FAC, not in the last year, but I know that Charlotte and I think Lee County, they bought, they bought all theirs out of FGUA. They, they had a program like, we're working on ours, and they, they were able to get them all under their umbrella. So I think this, it's a really worthy project. So the other question I have is, and go to the West, please. Oh, no, Google Earth. So I, you know, I've been looking at this property that Pinellas County owns forever as a possible solution for our field, lack of space for fields dilemma over here, and, and so twice I've gone to Pinellas County and had Mr. Carbola say, talk to them down there and see if we can use this property for temporary fields, and I did it just as recently as last month with Commissioner Myers, right there, right there. So zoom in on that property right there. So this is Thousand Oaks, and now, now you're, okay, now go south. So this property right here, and can you zoom out just a little, Tony? Just to give a little more context. The Pinellas County line starts at, pretty much at that road, I believe, or just before, maybe it's where the roads are white?
You can see a natural break with the houses and the lines.
Right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, oh yeah, right there, so that's the Pinellas County line, and this is Pinellas County property owned by their utilities. And they, they finally have said that they're coming in here and they're doing a storm, no, a reuse water project here. And I'm just trying to figure, I, I asked you guys in our meeting, if you could zoom out, I'm trying to understand the dynamics of this, because they're going to have to pump a lot of water from far away, because there's no, there's no Pinellas County houses around there, and so does it, are they going to, you know, maybe we can buy their water cheap? I, I, I just, I don't understand them wanting to put that way up, up here in the middle of nowhere, in their county. of nowhere, in their county.
Yes, so Commissioner, thank you, yes. You did bring that up, and staff is still looking into it, they're talking to Pinellas County to make that determination. So hopefully...
Okay, so we don't have any answers yet?
Yes, we don't have the answer yet, we're still looking into it.
But zoom out more, Tony. Keep zooming out. The only, I mean, the only big developments around there, well, there really aren't, I mean, you get in the Eastlake corridor, but it's not that dense. So I'm just trying to figure out how that makes economic sense to put that in the middle of no density. Yeah.
So they're going to use a facility just to like pump reclaimed water in, kind of like a RIB?
No, I think they're gonna, they don't have a lot of reclaimed water, right? All these developments were done without reclaimed water pipes. But all he told me, or she told me, the Commissioner, was that they're going to use this for a reclaimed water storage project, or something like that.
So they have trouble getting rid of this?
No, that, no, they don't, they don't...
Okay.
Yeah, I'm waiting, I don't understand it, I'm waiting for answers that ours, for our staff to ask them, but I would love to have that property.
Yeah, certainly looks like a very great opportunity for us to get reclaimed water from that area. So we'll still continue to reach out, and then hopefully by the next board meeting, we'll have an answer for you.
Okay. All right, so this is a public hearing item. Does there anyone who, in the public, who wants to speak to this item? Is there anyone online?
No, ma'am.
Any more questions?
So this is your, the way this was designed was, we wanted, they wanted to do a hearing on both sides of the county, so this is the first acceptance of public comment. It'll be advertised for your Dade City meeting.
Okay. All right, so do we, do we have to vote on it, or we just wait? We wait, okay. All right, thank you very much, and I look forward to the answers from Pinellas County. Maybe it can tie end up lowering our rates.
You have two...
And now we have, we're back to RS2, right?
No, you've had two continuances, 58...
P58, P59.
Okay, and then we'll come back to our, okay, let's go.
P58, we have proof of publication back in March of 2025, on March the 5th, Tampa Bay Times, for the meeting of April 22nd, where it was continued to May 20th, and where it was continued to today.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Amy Toll, Planning and Development Economic Growth. Item P58 is a zoning amendment, it's a continuance request for the enclave at Livingston MPUD Academy at the Lakes, Inc. It's a rezoning request from an AR Agricultural Residential Zoning District to MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to allow for the development of 178 town home dwelling units and associated infrastructure on approximately 46.3 acres located in South Central Pasco. This is a request to continue the item to September 18th in Newport, Ritchie.
September 18th?
Sixteenth, my birthday.
Sixteenth, sorry, I wrote that time wrong.
I can do what Carbola does, I'm not going to come in that day.
Fired away today, Mike.
Okay, this was advertised as a continuance? Okay, I'll take a motion.
Move to continue, time certain, September 2nd.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. P59, save it.
P59, we have proof of publication back in February 5th of 2025, for the meeting of March 25th, where it was continued to April 22nd, where it was continued to May 20th, where it was continued to June 17th, where it was continued to today.
Okay.
Is that still a project?
Does she have to read it? Does she have to read everything? Okay.
Item P59, thank you. Item P59 is a zoning amendment in the name of Little Road MPD Master Plan Unit Development. This is a rezoning petition from ER Estate Residential to MPD Master Plan Unit Development to allow for 23 townhomes and 32,452 square feet of commercial uses and associated infrastructure on 7.83 acres located on the east side of Little Road, approximately 550 feet north of the intersection of Little Road and Jasmine Boulevard. This comes with a continuance request to the September 16th Newport, Ritchie hearing.
Take a motion.
Move to continue, time certain, 2nd.
All in favor? Aye. All right.
That's it.
R, R something.
Good afternoon, Carrie Roberts, Purchasing Director of Pasco County. Today we're here for item R52 PU25-032, review the county administrator's decision in response to protest of solicitation number IFBKM-25-054, Shady Hills Wastewater Treatment Plant Headworks Replacement, approve award of solicitation number IFBKM-25-054 to Vogel Brothers Building Company in the amount of $33,816,226.86. There it is. All right, thank you very much. So our timeline for this project is that we had bids open on the 4th, I'm sorry, the 8th of April. We had four bids received, one from Archer Western Construction, one from Carr and Collier Inc., one from Poole and Kent Company of Florida, and then one from Vogel Brothers Company. On 4/18, we had received an inter-office memo recommending from Utilities Engineering and Contracts Management that the notice of intent to award be issued to Vogel Brothers. That document was issued on 4/21/25. On 4/28/25, Poole and Kent protested, and we received that letter. On 5/1/25, they were deemed eligible and were sent a letter. On 5/16/25, the county administrator formally denied Poole and Kent's protest. On 6/2/25, Poole and Kent requested a protest review by the board. On 6/5, the purchasing department requested additional clarification from Vogel regarding their trench safety details. And on 6/18/25, Vogel Brothers returned detailed responses to the safety trench questionnaires. In regards to the protest, the protest was received timely, it was on the 28th of April. It stated that Vogel should not be eligible for award due to the failure to show that the person signing the bid form was authorized to bind Vogel to contract, which we refer to as signature authority. Also, the failure to meet the Trench Safety Act requirements, stating Vogel did not list all methods and units for all work as required by the State Trench Safety Act, and that it was impossible to perform job safety with the amount of trench safety funding Vogel listed in the trench safety form, i.e. that Vogel's bid should have been higher. The next point was that the county corrected Vogel's pricing, Vogel put higher amount in the bottom of its bid form, and the county should have used that amount. The county's response to the protest was, regarding signature authority, not documenting the bidder's signature authority is a technical deficiency which can be corrected, it is not considered a material deficiency which would kill the bid. Rejecting bids for signature authority reasons would not serve the public interest of getting the lowest price. In regards to the trench safety concerns, the State Trench Safety Act only requires that amounts on trench safety forms be based on certain units, not that amounts be listed in those units. Also, by signing the bid form, Vogel represented that they'll comply with all trench safety standards at no extra cost. And also, there was no evidence that extra trench safety money would have raised Vogel's bid to be close to the other bid amounts. In regards to the county correcting the price, Vogel inadvertently added line items designated, quote, "for county use only" to their bid price entered on their bid form. This falsely inflated their total bid price communicated during the public bid opening. The county bid form does state that the county can fix errors in creating or adding line items in the bid form. On 6/2/25, Poole and Kent requested county administrator's protest denial be reviewed by the board. And finally, our recommendation is to uphold the decision by the county administrator to deny the protest by Poole and Kent under Section 2-124G2 of the purchasing ordinance and award the contract to Vogel. Both bidders are here and would like to speak.
Okay, well, who goes first?
Poole and Kent.
Okay, Poole. Sorry for your long...
Yeah, it was a long one. My name is David Bichet, I'm with the Poole and Kent Company, and I'll be joined by our legal counsel, Stuart Sacra, online. I have some documents I'd like to share.
Move to receive and file, 2nd.
All in favor? Aye.
Is this Stuart Sacra? Can you all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Who's that?
That's our legal counsel.
Oh, who's doing, who's doing the speaking?
Uh, Stuart is, Stuart Sacra.
Okay, have a seat, Howard.
First of all, I'd like to thank the commission for extending the accommodation. I'm not able to travel right now, and so I appreciate the opportunity to present this live online. One of the documents that you all should have received is a letter dated June 2nd, That responds to the decision by the county administrator. I just wanted to walk you through those issues. There is a PowerPoint presentation as well. Are you all able to see that?
Yes.
So the, under, under Florida law, the county or municipality, the public owner has, generally has discretion when awarding a contract. However, there are certain items that, where there isn't discretion, they have to strictly follow their own rules. And generally, if you look at page four of the letter, you will see that the list of items where, you know, provision in a contract is considered to be material are items, in this case, the ones that are applicable are, if the bidder fails to convey a clear intent to be bound, meaning is there a way he can get out of the contract even though he submitted a bid? And he submitted a bid bond. Second is, if there are mandatory requirements in the instruction of bidders, once they're, if it's mandatory, you can't then turn, the owner can't turn around and say, oh, it's not material. The law generally is, if you make something mandatory, it's material. And then the last category are statutory requirements. And so in this case, we have one each of those. The first one I'd like to point you to is the Trench Safety Act. If you could go back to the first slide, please, I'm sorry. If you can click on it, it should be able to make them enlarge so you can read it better, if you just click it once, please.
We can read it very well, we have, okay, that's it.
Oh, okay, there you go.
Even bigger.
The Florida Trench Safety Act comes, came, the contents of it were initially created by the federal government under OSHA to protect workers from, you know, being injured or killed because of cavins in trenches. Subsequently, in the early 1990s, the Florida Legislature adopted this statute which basically took the requirements of the OSHA regulations and turned them into state law. And in this case, it said, the key provisions are in Section 55363, it says, "The contract bid submitted by the contractor shall include," means it makes it mandatory, you know, "separate items identifying the cost of compliance." And then the second part, and then in Section 55364, it specifically says that the separate items identifying the cost of compliance shall be based on the linear feet of the trenches. If you go to the next slide, please. So in this, then if you can blow it up, hit the button so it enlarges it again. All right, so this has been, this is the form that was prepared by Pasco County, that the contractor had to sign. And it says that the bidder acknowledges that included in the various items are, you know, to comply with the Trench Safety Act, and they include $500. And then again, if you'll see at the bottom there, it says it is a mandatory requirement that disclosure statement be submitted with the bid. You go to the next page, please. You can, again, click, so, so then this provision, this is the neck, this is the form that they have to, to sign. And it says that the bidder has to, the following, it says that the following excavation measures and the linear feet of trench excavated under, they have to specify the linear feet in the form, and it says these units, and the prices have to be disclosed, and it says, the important part here is, there's purpose, for the purpose of compliance with the aforementioned act. In other words, if you can go to the next page, please. So you see, this is the form that they had to then fill out. And under it, I have Vogels on the left and Poole and Kent on the right. And what you'll see is, in the units, they put one, Vogel did, and then their unit of measure is LS, which stands for lump sum. Whereas Poole and Kent put in 500 in LF, which is linear feet for one item, and sheeting is another form, and it's 100. That's what the statute requires. And the reason that they require it is because contractors were not thinking about trench safety, and people were being injured and dying from, you know, because they weren't taking adequate safety measures. This is a required provision, and they chose, for whatever reason, not to bother to fill out the form as it's required. And it's a non-wavable thing because it's a statute, and it's done to protect the life and safety of the workers. And if you look at the administrator's decision, he says, well, it's not that big of a deal because, he looked at it and said, it's not a whole lot of money. But this isn't about money, this is about protecting people's lives. And the state legislature has said that this is a mandatory thing, every contractor who's doing any trench work on any job, if the trenches are more than five feet deep, must fill out this form. And if you don't, you're not entitled to the job, at least for public ones. Can you go to the next slide, please? You'll see that these are the other two bidders. And you'll see, so basically, three out of the four were able to follow what they were supposed to do, and only Vogel was unable to do it. And the way the law is, is they're non, if you can't, if you don't fill out that form, which is mandatory, you don't fill out properly, you're not a non-responsive bidder. Go to the next slide, please. And then to understand why they, that they put in sloping, this is a layout of part of the project. Could click the button, please, so it spins. See the, there is, where the yellow highlighting is, that is a 42-inch pipe that is to be installed on the project. And that section there is about 30 feet or so in length.
Your time is wrapping up, so you might want to speak a little faster.
Okay, next slide, please. If you can blow that up, please. You'll see, this now shows that that pipe has to go under these duck banks, and you can see the highlight that it's 16 feet deep. The only way to install that pipe 16 feet deep is to use sheeting, you can't do it by sloping. And, and so they, they clearly didn't follow the instructions, there's no way you can put in that pipe by just sloping it, which is what they said. And therefore, their bid is non-responsive, and they're not entitled to the project. You can move on to the next slide.
That was your time, sir.
Yeah, that was, I gave you another 40 seconds, so, I'm sorry, that was your 10 minutes.
And ask, just read my letter then, from June 2nd.
Yeah, I've got it here in front of me. Yeah, I've got it here in front of me.
I have a PowerPoint which we can present.
Okay. Take a motion. Need a second? Commissioner, second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. It's a long day.
My name's Don.
Where you left, basically.
And you have 10 minutes as well.
My name's Don Hemke, H-E-M-K-E. I'm attorney with Carlton Fields. I live in Tampa. And with me is the vice president for Vogel Brothers, Darren Vogel. Basically, and we're going to shorten a portion of this, and I'm going to let Mr. Vogel talk about the technical issues insofar as the trenching is concerned. But the background, as you look at PowerPoint 2, is very clear that basically, this is the fourth time that basically people from the county have looked at this issue. They looked at it when they accepted the confirmation of price. Our price is basically $53,000 cheaper than, than basically the competitor here. And basically, the purchasing department has recommended an award to us. What I would like to point out, if you look at page three of the PowerPoint, the standards become different on a situation like this because they have the burden of proof. They have, one of the purposes of competitive bidding, of course, is getting the cheapest price for a quality good, save money, county, and basically, it's $532,000 that would be saved. And finally, as you go up the tier, first began with the county administrator's decision. As you go up on appeal, it's a narrow standard. You don't sit as a new de novo review, make your own determination. You've got to determine that the county administrator was arbitrary, capricious, or in clear violation of law in making his decision, and he clearly did not. They've not talked much about the, their first claim, if we go over to page...
Well, I mean, Don, I can jump in on some of this. So, I mean, the first part is, on the signatory authority, if you go on SunBiz, I'm an officer of the organization, I'm an owner of the organization, and I signed under perjury whether or not I was bound to be able to sign for the project. My name's on the door. I'm pretty sure I can sign for the project, to be honest. When we get to the trench safety, first of all, the gentleman misspoke. Of the bidders, two of us listed lump sum as an option, Vogel and I think Archer, I can't remember who the second one was. There is two of the vendors that use lineal foot. The last significant expansion that was done at Shady, we performed. I'm looking at my trench safety form. Unfortunately, I don't have the original signed one anymore because that was in 2017, and we weren't doing electronic submissions yet. But I have what we had prepared, and we turned in a, for the unit price, an each of $2,000 for the trench box. There is $40,000 worth of slide rail put into the job. The bottom line is, safety is one of the four key beliefs of Vogel Brothers. Since the Trench Safety Act went into effect in the state, we've completed over 254 projects under the Trench Safety Act. We've had zero incidents related to trenching activities and zero compliance notices. You know, if you look right now, our EMR currently is sitting at .59. Safety is of huge importance to us, and so I really don't appreciate the assumption that based upon a dollar value on the form, whether or not we can complete the work on that sense. If you look at the drawing that the other gentleman pulled up, the reality is that there's almost $100,000 worth of shoring that we're all going to be carrying on that. It's not a trench box. It's not sloping. That's going to be sheet piles. There's going to be some form of trench, of slide rail system as well. So, the $10,000 that they had shown on theirs wouldn't be enough to cover that either. So, the reality is, it's covered. And if you look on our slide on sheet number, lost track on the sheets now. On page seven, I believe there was no less than six other times in the ITB that I'm attesting that we're going to follow the, and are bound to the laws under OSHA and under the Trench Safety Act. So, the form, just to say on the form that, you know, I didn't have, we didn't have lineal foot down, when in reality, you know, several bidders did lump sum. I've shown a lump sum number in the past on a project for the county that we completed successfully. It seems like we're in compliance there. And then, I mean, he didn't even get to the third point, talking about the bid form itself. But if you wanted to go to, I mean, I don't even know if we really need to go over that at this point, but if you want to go to slide...
13? No.
13, we can start there. And in reality, it's actually before that, it'd be slide 12, because it talks about, it breaks it down. So, BP-4 specifically states that, if you look on, in the IFB, on BP-4, it says, "The total bid price quoted above represents the bid for the proposal." The total bid price was what was included on line three. Line three for Poole &amp; Kent is at $31,302,200, and line three for Vogel Brothers was $30,804,898, which is a difference of $497,000. So, at the end of the day, specifically in the IFB, in the proposal, it states that line three is the determining number, and we're $400,000 less. So, I think that's really all we have at this point. I mean, if anyone wants to talk more about trench safety, I would love to do it. We have a great safety department that can go over it. I just really think we, pretty much, I don't do anything. Unless, Don, you have anything else you'd like to add?
I just want to add, think about the signatory requirement, basically. He is sworn under penalty of perjury that he had authority to do this. That is by far, and Florida case law is very clear, that you can add a formal document afterwards, basically, when it goes to responsibility.
And we have a secretary certificate that we can provide, but the IFB actually stated if you're an officer of the company, you do not have to provide the secretary certificate. And I am an officer on SunBiz, I'm an owner of the company, so I'm sure I can sign.
Questions?
Any questions?
And we, of course, adopt position that the county's taken. County administrator is denials for all three grounds that they had raised. Those are in our packet there as well.
Well, I do have one question. Just that attorney for the other company, I don't know their names. Was that, was that form filled out correctly? I'm a little lost, this trench act.
So, that form is on every project we do. And if you go and look on that example that, so that would be on sheet... Slide 11. He stated in the state statute that it says only lineal foot. The county's form already shows unit of measure, lineal foot slash SY, which is yardage. However, as you saw, these forms are on every single bid we do in the state. You know, we did a lump sum for sloping on this one. One of our competitors did a lump sum number for the cost of a single trench box. It's really more, it's an acknowledgement, no different than doing like a $100 indemnification. We're acknowledging that we're, that the state trench safety act is going to be followed. Because...
That's what gets a little over my head. And I'm not an attorney, so I have to look to my attorney.
Well, they have, they have indicated that they're going to comply with the law.
Okay.
And they are not increasing the cost of their bid. For, they're, basically, they're eating compliance. So, I...
And we've attested to that like six different times. It says you're testing your following the Trench Safety Act.
And for the reference of other commissioners, basically, if you look at page eight, there it admises what they recommend that we're going to do.
So, yeah, we've acknowledged, so in that letter that was discussed, we acknowledged the requirements of the Trench Safety Act, and we certified that, you know, it's going to be, you know, all work's going to be followed in that manner. That was one of the questions that was asked in that letter that the purchasing department mentioned.
Ma'am Chair?
Yep.
So, in reading the other slide, it even says on there, "A separate item identifying the cost of compliance with trench safety standards shall be based on the lineal foot trench to be excavated." It seems like that would be the way this was put in for a lineal foot would be acceptable. Mr. Attorney?
We advise, we advised the administrator on the protest, so, I mean, I'm not going to, I'm not going to countermand the advice that my assistants have given. I think that, I think that you are fine upholding the administrator's...
Not to interrupt.
Are we done with the presentation?
I think so. Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
I didn't see the red light go off, but I'm sure... But we started asking questions. Okay, so we're to the board.
Given from my county attorney, he's comfortable with it. And the staff, et cetera, I'm comfortable with it. I'll move approval of staff's recommendation.
I'll second it.
More discussion? Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're done? No. We're on to the county administrator. Then it's one of these two. You.
I have nothing.
We have nothing.
We're done.
We're done.
I laughed very much.
Print setter here.